Okay, we have everybody? Let me close the door.
I'll do it.
Thanks.
You got it, Cal.
Okay, everybody, let's go ahead and call to order the, what day is today? August 22nd City Boulder Planning Board meeting. We've got a quorum, one person missing. And before we do anything else tonight, I just need to update or make some modifications to the agenda. One of the ones that was up on the city's website only had two call-up period or call-up items, which actually three, we'll review those when we get to that section. And then item 5A has been pulled from this agenda and we may see it one day again, so hang on to your paper documents. But they've asked for continuance, so we may see them in a future meeting. So the first thing on our meeting agenda tonight is the approval of the August 1 meeting minutes. Does anyone have any further changes to be made to those, or are we okay with the stuff that was offered online? Or does someone want to make a motion?
I move to approve them.
Cool. So motion by John, second by Lupita. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cool. Approved unanimously. The next portion of the meeting is public participation, and that's for folks who would like to address the board on anything other than the topics that are in front of us tonight. So the two things that are on our agenda tonight are the ADU ordinance and the transportation master plan. So if you want to talk to us about something other than those two things, and you want to sign up with Cindy, nobody signed up? Great. You're all here for the main events. So we'll move to item four, which is the discussion of continuations and call-ups. So we've got three. One is the hopper. One is final plat for Mountain Heights subdivision. And then the third one is the one that was not on our agenda before, which is the site review amendment for a gun barrel tech center, PUD. Does anyone want to talk about any of those? John?
Yeah, I just have a question.
Can you turn your, hey, John, can you turn your mic on?
Oh. Yeah, I just, without calling it up, I'd just like to inquire about the Mountain Heights subdivision call-up item. And are, is that you who's going to, who's dealing with that, or?
That'd be me.
Oh, sorry. So the, the question is just whether there is any intention to put a sidewalk on the west side of the street along Fourth Street along that property. I noticed that there's a, an easement for a potential sidewalk going up Alpine along that property, but not along Fourth Street. And I don't believe there's an existing sidewalk there now. So that's my question.
Give me one second. I do not, so I don't believe that there is, but let me look real quick. Yeah, so as part of the final plat, we're not reserving any right-of-way, so it doesn't look like there's a sidewalk planned for that, for Fourth.
Well, I understand that there is none now and that there's not requested one, but has anybody checked with the transportation department to see if there's ever any intention to put a sidewalk there?
I could. I don't know that it was done as part of this application.
Well, so I, perhaps I, I need to call it up if we want to determine that, then.
Well, that's a, it's a question that's not really related to the criteria for subdivision. It's a factual question that I could get you an answer to, probably, if I could probably do a little research and get you an answer before the end of the meeting.
That would be fine.
Okay, great.
And also, John, the call-up period expires on August 30th, so there is still time if that question can be sorted out in the span of this meeting.
Good, I'd be, I'd be grateful to, to learn about that, then.
Any other thoughts, John? David?
Excuse me. On the hopper 2525 Frontier Avenue case, there was a communication from Community Cycles asking that the curb cut onto Frontier be examined to see if we, it could be flattened instead of kind of sloped to the side for pedestrians. And I think that was probably a good thing to look at. I just wondered if, if anybody had, was going to be looking into.
We'll definitely take it in account as part of the review.
Okay, thanks. I'm, I wasn't going to call this up.
Any other comments on the call-ups? I only have one, which is the hopper looks really, really cool. I'm super psyched about that. So that moves us to public hearing items. The first of which for us will be discussion of, and public hearing, recommendation to city council for an ordinance regarding ADUs in RE and RR zone districts. So the way this is going to work is we'll have a presentation by city staff. City planning board will ask questions of staff that are really clarifying questions to evaluate our decision-making process. And then the public has a chance to speak to that item. You'll have three minutes each. You want to sign up with Cindy over here if you haven't already. And then we'll return them out to the board and we'll deliberate on it. And that's the process. We'll follow the same process for the other agenda item as well. So we'll start off by a presentation.
So Carl Guyler and Andrew Collins will be presenting the item. I wanted to answer board member Gersel's question. So there is an existing sidewalk on the west side of Fourth Street in front of that property, so that's why we didn't require any easement dedication because it's already existing.
Thank you.
You bet.
We're trying to get our PowerPoint up on the screen, so it'll take a moment. Cindy, can you help with that?
Would you like some water?
There we go.
Sure.
Good evening, board members. Before you tonight is a proposed ordinance related to the Large Homes and Lots project, what we're calling Phase 1, as directed by council. The ordinance is attached, attached to the packet in Attachment A. Trying to advance this forward. So the, basically tonight, planning board is required to make a recommendation to city council on the draft ordinance that would basically do two things. It would create the ability, the option to establish a, an additional accessory dwelling unit, ADU, on the RR and RE zoned lots, so a maximum of two. Today, the current regulations say you can have one per lot. It would also create the option of doing single-family dwelling conversions to duplexes or triplexes in those zones as part of this process. So just to talk about next steps, after the planning board recommendation, the ordinance will get forwarded to city council for consideration. So first reading of the ordinance is scheduled now to occur on September 17th. It would be on the consent calendar, so basically the consent agenda, so there would be no public hearing, but there could be open comments made by the public at the beginning of that meeting, or comments can be sent to the council email up on the screen. Second reading of the ordinance is scheduled, tentatively scheduled for October 1st. This is where there would be a public hearing on the item and we'll, we'll present the same information and the planning board recommendation to the council on the project. So following any action on this particular ordinance, council has asked that we come back to them after the, the election that occurs in November to get feedback from the next sitting council on what we're calling the Phase 2 items and get feedback on that, and then we would prioritize the, the project as we move forward with code changes. So tonight, the, the presentation is organized around some key issue questions that we pose to planning boards. So the first two relate to the ADUs. So does planning board support the proposed change that would allow up to two ADUs per lot in the RE and RR zoning districts? The next question related to that is, does planning board support the changes to the occupancy standards that would allow two additional persons in order to enable an additional ADU on those lots? So the next three questions relate to the option for duplex and triplex conversions. Does planning board support the proposed change to allow the conversions in, on these lots in the RE and RR zones? We also wanted to talk about the concept of, of an additional, a higher-density version in RE, which is actually allowed pursuant to the Conference of Plan land use map designation, where potentially you could allow one unit for every 7,500 square feet instead of one unit for every 15,000 square feet. This is not reflected in the attached ordinance, but we wanted to get feedback on this from the board. And lastly, should a deed restriction be required as part of this process to require permanent affordability for any of the conversions? So we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. So I am going to turn it over to Andrew for the next part of the presentation.
Okay, great. Thanks, Carl. So in 2018, city council identified the Large Homes and Lots project as a priority planning project. During the fall of last year, council established the project goal, scope, and purpose for the project, and this included a study session with council and a matters item discussion as well in December, and as well as a planning board matters item discussion in November. The council established Project Y statement is shown here on the screen. I'll just read a little bit of it to you. It states that the city's residential neighborhoods are experiencing a dramatic demographic and economic shift with the replacement of modest, more affordable homes with larger and more expensive homes. These large homes are often inconsistent with the existing character of the neighborhoods and our inefficient use of land has exacerbated the city's housing, jobs, and balance and the high cost of living. To address these shortcomings, smaller home sizes and creative infill solutions that consider the potential for multiple smaller homes and large lot areas where appropriate should be encouraged to foster a more efficient use of land and support a broader housing and economic diversity. Moving forward, council also established project goals which were to study and consider creative solutions for infill redevelopment of large lot areas into two or more housing units, to study and consider a potential hard cap on floor area for single-family residential development, as well as incentives for preserving existing housing stock and for infill solutions that would be affordable, as well as looking at adjusting the land use code size for in bulk standards, as well as updates to the city's energy conservation code. And the last one is going on a separate track. There's, will be updates with the Boulders Building Code in 2020 proposed to lower the net zero requirements for single-family homes, 3,000 square feet and greater. The map on the right of the screen with the yellow, that was council's initial scope for the project, looking at the RE and RR zoning districts as well, well as RL residential low RMX1 zones initially. In May, council reduced the scope for Phase 1 to just look at the RE and RR zones, as Carl mentioned. In addition, the intent of the project, per council's direction, was to implement some key Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan policies shown here on the screen. These include the jobs, housing balance, accessory units, energy-efficient land use, getting a mixture of housing types, as well as permanently affordable housing for additional intensity, among others. Here we go. So the background regarding the community engagement phase began in January of this year. Staff crafted some initial options and concepts based upon council's direction and went out to the community to show them for the zones, and these included a reduction, again, in FAR or a cap, exploring that concept, coupled with some new creative infill options and housing types, which are shown here on the screen. So again, cottage courts, smaller lot sizes, new duplexes and triplexes, and additional The outreach that we did for the projects included direct mailing to property owners in the RE and RR zones for the, for the two most recent open houses, next-door posts and social media outlets, as well as articles in the newsletter for planning in the community as well, utility bill, utility bill mailers, as well as dedicated project webpages and a Be Her Boulder online questionnaire. This year, in February and March, we held three code amendment open houses. These included engagement exercises and presentation of materials for the Large Homes and Lots project, where we presented different options and got feedback. We also had the Be Her Boulder engagement questionnaire open during the same time period. We were at the What's Up Boulder Community Engagement Event in April. We had four neighborhood office hours across different parts of the city, two focus group meetings with different stakeholders with, across the spectrum with their different diverse opinions. And then most recently in May, we had the open house with direct noticing going to the RE and RR property owners, presenting the broad range of options. And then following the May 28th council session, council study session where the scope was reduced for Phase 1, went back out on Monday and presented the options in the ordinance before you tonight. Had about 120 people at the most recent open house. So just kind of quickly, what we've heard throughout the process and the community-wide open houses in March and February, majority of the participants at that time were not in support of a FAR or cap on home size. There were mixed sentiments on whether to encourage more smaller homes instead of individual large homes. A slight majority was not in favor of tiny houses being allowed in all residential zones. And then a slight majority of the communities indicated support for allowing some different infill options in the RE and RR zones instead of not allowing any additional options. The Be Her Boulder online questionnaire, we had about 380 participants and respondents. About 40% of the respondents were from North Boulder, about 25% from Central Boulder and South Boulder respectively. This is a kind of the city's online engagement tool intended to complement in-person engagement events. It's not a scientific survey. So with that said, with this questionnaire, the majority of respondents, again, were not in support of further restrictions on FAR or cap. Again, split sentiments on encouraging more smaller homes on large lots, but a majority did indicate they were in favor of allowing duplexes and triplexes and cottage courts in RE and RR zones. Again, this is a community-wide survey or questionnaire. At the May 13th open house, where we directly noticed the RE and RR property owners, we presented the same broad array of options and simply asked, what did you like about the options, what didn't you like? So we heard that people liked the idea of smaller house sizes, the flexibility to build ADUs, and more variety of housing choices. What people didn't like was the idea of increasing density. They didn't want to have additional zoning changes, and they were concerned about negative impacts of traffic and infrastructure to neighborhoods. Other comments we heard were that any cap on home size should be tied to more housing flexibility and choice, and that some thought that the changes would change, the proposed changes could change the character of the neighborhoods as well. So again, we had a May 28 study session with council where we narrowed, where council narrowed the options and the focus for a Phase 1 to focus on the RE and RR districts, the large lot districts. And the two options that council wanted to pursue further was, first, to conditionally allow one ADU, two total, per qualifying lot, and then to conditionally allow the conversion of existing detached rolling units to, into a duplex or triplex unit. So this past month, we had an open house to present those options to the community and have discussions and explain the details of that. We asked a couple of simple questions. You know, what is your level of support or opposition to these proposals? 75% expressed opposition to allowing an additional ADU on these lots. And then similarly, 80% expressed opposition to allowing a conversion of homes to duplexes or triplexes as proposed in the ordinance. So I'm handing it off to Carl to go into the details of the proposed ordinance.
Thanks, Andrew. So going back in time a little bit, so on April 23rd, we had a discussion with city council on this project before the study session where they had requested that we advance some other code changes in a phased manner. And to, in order to make that possible, they wanted this particular project to be phased. So we started analyzing what could be brought forward before the fall versus something that would take longer and happen afterwards. So we came to planning board on May 16th with a lot of the options to get feedback from the board, and that helped inform what options for phasing we brought to the city council on May 28th. So staff had originally broken it up where Phase 1 options would not require any policy changes, things that were potentially implementable under the current plan. And that, and we included basically three things. So the, the option of doing a FAR cap, a floor area ratio cap, adding one additional ADU per lot, or allowing duplex, triplex conversions. And then Phase 2 was a little bit more, you know, looking at things that may end up requiring Boulder Valley Comprehensive planning changes to allowable density, potentially things, potentially that would look like rezoning. So adding the allowance for limited subdivisions, restricted-sized cottages, like Poplar Place type projects, cottage courts would be more substantial changes and could potentially require some infrastructure upgrades in certain areas. So that would take more time, and that was deferred to Phase 2. So when we had that discussion with city council on May 28th, they generally agreed with what staff had posed as, as Phase 1 options, with the exception that the, the cap on FAR was removed. The city council basically felt that incentives should basically come first and then through time, if, if it was found appropriate, that potentially as part of Phase 2, we could look at potentially lowering FAR to get different housing results. So as Andrew stated at that meeting, they also changed the focus to the RE and RR zones. Again, this is what the majority of the council members were saying at that meeting. Based on the incidence of larger-sized homes, which kind of spurred this project, the focus was changed to these particular zones. So the RE zone, the residential estate, currently allows one unit for every 15,000 square feet, so the minimum lot size in that zone is 15,000 square feet. The RR zones is one unit for every 30,000 square feet, and that's the minimum lot size. You can see there's almost 2,000 lots within these zones. One thing to point out, as you've probably read in the memo, is that the rural residential zones actually have a rural residential land use designation on them from the comp plan that basically caps their density at no more than two dwelling units per acre. RE is a little different in that the land use designation for those areas allows up to six dwelling units per acre, which is actually the same as the, the low residential low zones, so RL1 and RL2. So we wanted to take that into consideration for tonight. So moving forward with the key issues, again, the question is, does planning board support the addition of one ADU per lot, as well as the change to the occupancy standards? So getting into the nuts and bolts of the ordinance, the ordinance would allow one additional ADU, a total of two per lot. It wouldn't be permitted to exceed at the floor areas' maximums that currently exist, so in no way would this increase the intensity on the site in terms of floor area. The, the buildings would still have to meet the setbacks of the zone and would have to be incidental to the single-family unit on the site. There would be the same incentives for affordable ADUs that currently exist in the code. So if you were to make a slightly larger unit or waive the parking requirement, there'd be a requirement, basically, they could voluntarily do some cap on, on the rent for those particular units, and that would still apply in this particular ordinance. The ordinance change also includes the change to the occupancy standards to allow two additional persons per lot. And the review process would stay the same. It'd be a conditional use, which is a staff-level review, as long as it met the criteria in the code, the ADU could be granted. So moving on to the duplexes and triplex conversion, does planning board support the proposed change for the conversions in these zones? This would basically only allow conversions of existing single-family units. So this was proposed, number one, to minimize the level of visual change that would occur in the neighborhood because it, you know, making a conversion would be less noticeable than a brand-new, like, building going up. It already looks like a single-family house, so this would enable it to be, like, chopped up if the land area permitted. The other thing is, it's an incentive for preserving some of the existing housing that's in the neighborhoods. So in order to ensure that it's protecting and the level of demolition doesn't exceed the existing house excessively, there's a criterion in there that would require that 75% of the exterior walls would have to be preserved and 50% of the roof form or the roof area would have to be preserved to, to protect that. This would follow the existing density allowances in those zones, so again, it'd be one unit for every 15,000 square feet of lot area in RE, and one unit for every 30,000 square feet in RR. So basically, what this looks like is, under the current density restrictions, in order to get a duplex in RE, you'd have to have a 30,000-square-foot lot, or if you wanted to get a triplex, it would have to be 45,000 square feet. In RR, you'd have to have 60,000 square feet for a duplex and 90,000 square feet for a triplex. So there, there's data within the memo that shows that there's very little opportunity for those types of conversions in RR based on that density, but you would be able to get more in the RE zones. So another thing, again, that we wanted to talk about with the board, this is not reflected in the current ordinance, but is the fact that the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan does allow for up to six dwelling units per acre in RE. This opens up the option for potentially changing the code where you could get more duplexes or triplexes in RE by amending the code to allow one dwelling unit for every 7,500 square feet of lot area. So we wanted to get feedback from the, the board on that. So again, we're proposing the new criteria in the code, and it would follow the same conditional use process that is applied to ADUs, so it'd be a staff-level review. If it meets the criteria, it can be granted. So moving on to the, a deeper discussion about the increased density in RE, this data shows, under current density limitations, there could be an additional of 132 units. Again, this is the amount of units that could potentially be created under the current code if someone were to subdivide their lot and create a single-family house. With the option of doing one dwelling unit for every 7,500 in the code, that would change it quite substantially. So in the RE zone, it would increase the total number of units to over 700 units. So one thing we wanted to point out as part of this is that while the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan is open to the six dwelling units per acre for RE, the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan does apply to many RE areas. And if you look through the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan, it has a lot of statements in it that are very open to a diversity of housing units and also finding creative ways of getting more affordability. But you'll notice that a lot of the language does talk about applying those concepts to new developing areas. There are several statements in the North Boulder Plan that talk about established neighborhoods and that the, basically, the zoning density and lot sizes in those zones should be basically preserved. So that's something that we have to bear in mind if we were to, like, move forward with this. It may actually require changes to the NOBO plan, but we, we did want to get feedback from the board on that concept. So the last key issue relates to deed restricting. There has been some interest in throughout this process of if we're doing this, we should be getting permanently affordable housing to allow for like increased density and an increased number of housing types. So we only got the official Kaiser Marston Associates report yesterday and we forwarded that to you today, the final version that we got this morning. So when you've, if you've had a chance to look at that, you'll notice that they basically compared the allowance for one single family house versus if you were able to get additional density through like a triplex on that lot versus if you were to do deed restricting on that lot. And what their findings were is that there would actually be very little financial incentive to do the duplex or triplex based on the single family house. That's, the floor area of the house is a bigger selling point and actually adds to the value more than just the allowance to do the additional density. What their report also says is that if you were to deed restrict one of those units, it would actually be a loss for that property owner. So again, not much incentive for property owners to do that. So bearing that in mind, they did mention that if, if the floor area were to be capped, like was originally proposed like as a phase one option, potentially the city could actually lower floor area ratios in these areas. It would have to be basically lowered by about 30 to 40% in order to create an incentive. So if the city was really looking to cap single family homes at a smaller size and allow a larger, the current amount of floor area, that would create an incentive for the deed restriction. So we just wanted to make the board aware of this. This is something that's actually been discussed in other communities like City of Portland. They're going through a very similar process as us right now where this is an option, but it has not yet been adopted by their city. So the staff recommendation tonight for planning board to recommend approval of the ordinance is based on the overall goals of the project to create more alternatives to large home construction and encourage more modest sized units. So the proposed changes in the ordinance would move in the direction of supporting the following housing related policies that are up on the slides. You can see Policy 7.06, a mixture of housing types, which we've had in the plan for quite some time, but was recently updated. So it does have a statement that the city will encourage property owners to provide a mix of housing types as appropriate. This may include support for ADUs, OAU's, older term, alley houses, cottage courts and multiple, building multiple small units rather than one large house on a lot.
Excuse me, are the, are the letters in bold, the proposed change?
This is, this is existing text in the current, yeah, we were just emphasizing that language.
Oh, so.
This is not proposed to change.
Okay.
So we put these other two existing policies up on the slide. So one is preserve existing housing stock. We wanted to just emphasize that since the option for duplex, triplex conversion could potentially incentivize retaining some of the existing more modest sized buildings in these neighborhoods. And we also just wanted to put up Policy 7.11, which I'll read, which kind of aims at what we're talking about as far as potential changes in RE about allowing additional intensity to encourage permanent affordability. So basically it says, "The city will develop regulations and policies to ensure that when additional intensity is provided through changes to zoning, a larger proportion of the additional development potential for the residential use will be permanently affordable housing for low, moderate, or middle income households." So with that, this slide has motion language should the planning board opt to recommend approval of the ordinance. So that concludes our presentation. Just touching on next steps again, September 17th, first reading at city council. October 1st would be second reading in the public hearing. And then we would have, depending on direction that we get from the next council, have some future discussions about phase two. So we also have a slide that has all the key issues on it if we need to go back to this. So we're happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks very much, Carl, Andrew. Before we start asking or answering questions, I'm just gonna ask everyone to be as concise as they can be. We've got a lot of folks from the public who want to speak to us and I want to make sure that they don't have to wait around too long. So if we can be our, keep our answers and questions both concise, that would be great. So does anyone have any questions for staff? John?
Yeah. In your description of the lots that would be available for changed use in each of these categories, in the RR and RE categories, did your numbers of lots take into consideration the non-conforming lots that exist in each zoning district that, for example, in RR are less than 30,000 square feet?
Did take, we took those.
Yeah, I mean, we looked at the overall number of lots regardless of lot size, conforming or not. But this would only be lots that would be conforming. So to get a duplex, you'd have to be in RE, let's say, 30,000 square feet. The minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet. So all those, in terms of the square footage or lot area, would be conforming. So in essence, in terms of square footage, lot area, all the numbers would be conforming to lot area.
So, so what you have there is not the total number of lots, but the total number of conforming lots in each zone district?
So the table, 2A, and the memo, it lists the overall number of lots, including conforming or non-conforming lots. And then the triplex eligible lots and duplex eligible lots are there as well. Also have a column that shows the conforming lots as well. So we have all, all of that is laid out in that table.
Yeah, if you look at the third column, you can see the number drops down from the overall number of lots because those are, that takes out the lots that are non-conforming.
Okay, thank you. David?
Excuse me. In the RR case with two dwelling units per acre, it would be possible, I suppose, to consider one DU per 22,000 square feet. And I just wondered if you ran the numbers to see if that would result in more possible possibilities.
Yeah, we did look at that back during the May 28th study session. It was, I can pull it up, it was kind of incremental. For those zones, there's so, there's so few lots in general, it's like 380 lots in those two zones. It was kind of miniscule, but we do have those figures for a variety of lot sizes. We could dig through and get you a more specific answer, I think.
Just curious, yeah, if it wasn't a lot, I couldn't see why you wouldn't have proposed it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Herman?
So it seems that the occupancy limitations make it impossible to have three nuclear families in the house and two ADU scenario. That the way Boulder does families, they're not considered one person. You're talking about, not, you know, the five unrelated adult standard isn't really what's being used here. So is that true that?
Yeah, I mean, that's the reason why we're proposing the increase because you didn't want to give the option of an ADU and then have occupancy standards not permit someone to have their partner staying with them in a unit.
So if you have, if the occupancy standard is now raised by two people and each, each additional ADU has, you know, a pair of partners and maybe their children, how does that fit into the five people standard that we're adopting, that we're proposing?
The dependents are not counted.
But the, the grownups are, and so you'd have two in the main house.
You can have a family plus two. And then with the new standards, it would be plus an additional two. Or you can have three unrelated plus two.
So just to make it real, if we have three families, each one, you know, two parents and two kids, how does, how does the, do those 12 people fit into the standard that we're proposing here for a house and two ADUs?
Yes.
Define parent.
Lupita?
I think I had a little bit of that same question. I sort of kind of maybe simplified it in my head. I said, okay, two families with two parents present and one with a single parent add up to five. And then however many children they have in each one of those households. Maybe it's to simplify, but I thought it was a little complicated to figure it out.
But what Steph just said is that you don't need to have a one parent household. You can have three two parent households.
Right, which would be a good thing. We should all be happy if we had, you know, three households with two parents in it. But my, my question is was more related to all of the feedback we got from the community. And I'm really hoping that I can get to some of the, the issues to it. So I have some questions and I'm, I'm gonna try to figure it out as I go through because I was reading these things and taking notes. So, so that I'm, so that I'm clear, what we are looking here is about the addition of a second ADU. Is that it would allow for potentially more people to live in, in a lot that presently, as large enough that could contain more. In fact, we just heard it could be up to six potential dwellings in some of these areas and the RE.
No, I mean, the, the RE would still, when we're talking about six dwelling units per acre.
Yes.
It would, you, if you were to go with that one unit for every 7,500 square feet, it would move it up to that six dwelling units per acre where today it's like around three dwelling units per acre.
Okay, so in my mind, I'm just looking for what the, the, the maximum allowable base on the, the BC. Okay, so that's not what I'm advocating, no. I'm more concerned about, if we, if we were to move in a, in a direction where the second ADUs are allowed, my concern is, like many of the residents, is that they're gonna have an increase of, you know, more people living there. But, correct me if I'm wrong, in order for those things to happen, the owners of the homes have to sell their homes or they have to add these ADUs. It's not like the city is asking them to do it the moment this new ordinance goes in effect.
No, it's not mandatory.
It's not mandatory.
People would not be required to do this?
Okay, so this is, this is what I want to get at, you know, because there's a lot of fears that I read through people's comments. And I was thinking, well, is there maybe an underlying message here that the moment this ordinance gets passed, if it gets passed, everybody's gonna run over to build new ADUs and therefore we're gonna have this potential problem in our hands? I wasn't unfortunately in any of those events to hear directly from people. But I'm wondering if this is something that you see coming? If this, and if it is potentially this happening, I'm thinking, what would be a scenario that you think? How many of these homes, out of how many are possible, will have to make these changes the moment this ordinance happens? I mean, my sense was that a lot of these people have been there for a long time and I thought, well, I don't think they're gonna change their homes.
I mean, it, it increases the options on these sites to add an ADU. And the ADU ordinance has actually been in effect for, for quite some time now and has allowed ADUs in RE and RR. And when you look at the table in the memo, you can see it, there's really not that many ADUs in those zones. So you, we might start seeing more, but I don't know that we're necessarily anticipating that everyone's gonna come in all at once and.
Yeah, because I was trying to quantify this thing. We're talking about, you know, an increase of 5%, an increase of 80%. And, you know, so the, the comments from my, my mind is, okay, how, first I'm looking for the asymptobity. What's the maximum that can occur? And then what is a reasonable kind of forecast of what is happening? So that was one of the things that I was concerned about. Are we really talking about a lot of these things happening the moment this ordinance gets approved, if it does get approved?
A little less narrative and more questions, if you don't mind.
Yeah, because I want to make sure people understand my concerns. Because if I'm hearing people fearing something, I want to know if these fears are justifiable or not. And so I want to make sure that I understand that.
We can talk about that under the deliberations, for sure.
Yeah, so my, my, my point was if, if you can give us a sense, you know, if, if we have any way to assure our public that they will in fact still have control over their homes, you know, that there is, they should have a confidence that, that this is not gonna change the, you know, standard of living. Because in fact, for any of these changes to happen, they have to make the changes, not cancel and not the planning board.
And just to be clear, the, the ADU ordinance requires that the owner of the property reside on the property, either in the main dwelling unit or in the ADU, and that's not proposed to change?
Okay, so it would have to come from the residents themselves. Okay, then I just wanted to make that clear.
So I just follow up on my question. So the, on page eight, in the bottom paragraph, it says, "This would allow five persons and their dependents to occupy the three dwelling units." This is in a two ADU scenario, permitting two couples, four persons, and an additional head of household, the fifth person, along with any dependents. So, you know, your typical, your typical American city's occupancy limitation, it's gonna say three unrelated adults. And a couple are considered to be related and their kids aren't adults, so a family is considered one person. But here we're defining these as persons. And you've just said in the staff report that it's two couples and one head of household. And I don't think that's gonna work. I think, you know, you, you, you own the main house, you're a couple, you have some kids. You rent out the first ADU to a couple with some kids. And then the third ADU goes up for rent and a family comes and wants to rent it. And you say, well, I can't rent that to you because you're a family. And that's discrimination on the basis of family size, which we can't do.
So the, the memo is actually only describing one occupancy scenario. There is an additional one that's allowed in the code that talks about a family plus two. And then the code change proposed now would allow an additional two. So that's how we would get to the three families essentially.
So what's, what's the proposal?
We're just saying we're allowing two additional persons without counting their dependents under the current occupancy standards. And, and the memo describes one of those standards, but there's an additional one in the code that would get you to the three families total.
Okay, I'll just have to keep going to look and see the code language. I'm sorry, I might have missed that.
I think.
Let me just double check.
Yeah, I, you actually have to look in the actual code. I think we should have probably put that in the memo and put that option out there as well expressly.
Thanks.
And, yeah, David?
Is it accurate to say that that's an example? Of, of a, but there are other examples, the three couples being one. That's how I looked at it, but maybe I'm.
Yes.
Well, could I ask another one?
Yeah, David said John.
Just in the ordinance text, I saw reference to rental licenses for affordability. And I felt like in the memo, it kind of said that we can't really do rental affordability with ADUs. But then when I saw this verbiage, which I didn't really understand in the ordinance itself about rental licenses for affordability, is there something there that, or was I just kind of? Because I didn't see any real explanation in layman's terms of how you would do that. I thought all of the affordability would be done through ownership covenants. So.
So when the last round of ADU code changes was adopted, the city did create an affordable option. And what it was, was it allowed some additional square footage if the unit was rented at a certain price. And it allowed for a waiver of the parking requirement for that ADU. And to document that in the rental licensing process, that would be documented. So that's what that reference is about.
Okay.
But a person, but, but any applicant could choose whether to create a market rate unit or restrict the rents.
Okay, okay, I think I got it. Thanks.
John, you had another?
Yeah, with respect to the potential for triplexes and duplexes, I didn't see any language about ownership in that. So I'm trying to imagine, could this be a way of eventually subdividing the property? If, say, an existing house is divided into three and some, and each of those is sold separately and they internally, you know, make some arrangement for how much of the lot is. for how much of the lot is allocated to each of the units? Are we effectively subdividing by doing that?
The current regulation, as it's proposed in the ordinance, is that it would not permit subdivision. It would actually, if someone were to do a duplex or triplex, it would have to be a condominium arrangement that's set up on the property. So we haven't taken the step of figuring out how the whole subdivision piece would work if we go that direction. We're thinking that that's more of a phase two, if there is still interest in getting either more conversions or creating more duplexes and triplexes in these areas.
So this means that although it might not be legally established as such, one could in practice subdivide without further legal arrangements by having, you know, half-ownership of a house and agreeing with the neighbor where a fence line might go if they were inclined to do that. Is that correct?
That's correct, and we wouldn't call that subdivision under the code. It would be creating a condominium regime. It would still be one lot, but the units could be owned by different people.
Thank you.
Carmen? I just want to get this cleared up so that we can deliberate properly on this. So looking at the proposed language in 9.6.3A1, it says that the occupancy of the principal dwelling unit, together with the occupancy of any one accessory dwelling unit, shall not exceed the occupancy requirement set forth in 985, occupancy of dwelling units for one dwelling unit. Where two accessory dwelling units are on a lot or a parcel, up to two additional persons are allowed, but if, but my reading of 985 is still that the first two, the main house and the ADU, are limited to members of a family plus one or two roomers, or up to three persons. And so I'm still having trouble seeing how even with the proposed new code language, you're getting to three families with two parents per family. I just, I want to hear if you got that or if we need to actually...
It's complicated. If you keep reading in 9631A, it says, "For purposes of calculating the authorized occupancy of the principal dwelling unit and any associated accessory dwelling units, under this subsection, any occupant and his or her dependents shall be counted as one person."
But that doesn't, so that only works if on the third unit, the wife can consider her husband a dependent. I still don't think it's getting us there. Any occupant and his or her dependents shall be counted as one person. It doesn't say any couple shall be counted as one person.
Yeah, but so let's say we have a family in the principal dwelling unit.
This is what happens when two lawyers get into it. I'll wake the rest of you guys up.
So we have a family in the principal dwelling unit, then you can have two unrelated people...
One or two roomers.
Or related in the second ADU, and plus any of their dependents. And it doesn't, it can be the dependent of the one adult and any dependent of the other adult. They don't have to be kids from the same people. And then you can have in the second ADU, two additional people and any of their dependents.
Excuse me, can those additional people be couples? So could you have an individual and a couple and they're considered two unrelated adults? That's what I was thinking.
When I said the two additional people plus their...
Yeah, yeah. And one of those two additional...
They can be a couple or they cannot be a couple?
Oh, I meant each of those two people. Can one of those people be a couple and then the other be a couple? So you could actually have four adults?
In one unit, you mean?
No, you can't.
No, and I think what, when, so this is language that was drafted by council during the last code update with not counting the dependents. And I think we were thinking about what the tax code allows to be counted as a dependent. So I think it could potentially be a dependent if you have a disabled person or something like that. But generally, it's children.
Are you worried that the third couple is being forced into a tax status where one has to be the dependent to the other in order to satisfy the code?
No, I'm just worried that we're going to be denying people who are couples, because I still think that if we look at the occupancy of dwelling units, 9.8.5, members of a family plus one or two roomers, two roomers, is the way I think we're trying to get there. And the two roomers doesn't tend to be interpreted in the same way as members of a family or persons, because now that we've defined them as roomers, they're not persons. They're people who are renting, they have a different, you know, they're rooming, they have a different legal status. And so it really connotes that you're only talking about two people, one or two people, additional people who are allowed. So I don't know if we get another family out of this clause, plus one or two roomers. So I think it's just confusing and it's something that we should probably consider redrafting. And I'm not here to, we can talk about this during deliberation, that's my opinion, but I was just trying to find out how staff was interpreting it, and I think I have. Cool, cool. Other questions? John?
Yeah, I think probably the last time that RR and RE use tables were considered in detail was maybe 20 years ago, when it was, at least in the RR areas, the requirements or the ability to subdivide large lots was diminished rather than enhanced. And I just wondered if you, if staff had considered the logic that was used at that point to reach that conclusion and compared it with what is being proposed now.
Are you referring to when these neighborhoods were annexed to the city or...
Well, even subsequently. I'm thinking particularly of the neighborhood I'm most familiar with, Calmia Juniper, west of Broadway, where there had been a bunch of flagpost lots established, and then the ability to do that was abolished, thus diminishing the ability to subdivide in general in that neighborhood. And I'm just wondering if you've considered the logic that was used then to make that rule and taken that into account in your deliberations?
That was not factored into this ordinance.
I just wanted to also just clarify too, in terms of the proposed ordinance and attachment A, in terms of the number of duplexes or triplexes that could be built, it's based on the existing minimum lot area requirement, so wouldn't it be any more units than what someone could subdivide for a single-family homes? So it would not be any additional allowance. The alternative one with the 7,500 one would allow some more units, but the actual draft ordinance is the same amount of units that could be subdivided today. So just to clarify that.
Well, I've got a quick question or two, and these are partially, I think, covered in the memo, but maybe I'm forgetting too. Are, I'm assuming tiny homes are not under the ADU ordinance, right? They're not allowed as part of that? Okay. I've heard some of those things out there. And then when you create an additional ADU or subdivide a single-family home into a duplex or triplex, or convert rather, do, if you're creating additional dwellings, do IH requirements apply to that?
They would.
Okay, so you're basically paying, when you do create those, you pay into the inclusion of housing program? Okay, those are the only ones I had. Anybody else? Okay, great. So we are going to move into the public participation part of this hearing. So if you haven't signed up and you want to speak, sign up with Cindy over there. The way we'll do this, okay, great. So the way we'll do this is you can look at the screen, maybe one or both of the screens, and the list of names will show up there in order. And it's great if we can have folks, I'll call three names at a time, and if you're sort of two and three on that list, if you come on up and stand and ready to speak, that saves a little bit of time for everybody. We have 19 speakers so far, so that's like three minutes or so apiece, so that'll be about an hour of public testimony tonight. But although I haven't looked to see if anyone's pooling time, so I could be wrong. Yeah, one, okay, maybe one or two in there. So the first three folks are Thomas Kirk, Brenda Kirk, and Helena Zerubeva. I'm so sorry. And all the seats in the front row are open, so if your name's called, you can come sit up.
My name is Tom Kirk. I was born in Denver in 1940. I was raised in Denver, went to college at Colorado University, and then moved away for 43 years. My father was born in Denver in 1900. He lived his entire life in Denver and he died there. One of my two sons was born in Illinois, but when he got to the point that he wanted to go to college, he applied to Colorado University, came here, graduated, and moved away. So we're old-time Colorado people. So during the 43 years that I lived away, I was called back once by the University of Colorado to award me the George Norland Award of the Alumni Association. That's the highest award given by CU, and it's for lifetime achievement. So I have connections to the town and my family has connections to the town. And it was an easy decision of my wife and I to move back to Boulder when we retired. We bought a ranch house in Boulder because, and it was in the Fraser Meadows area development, which has fairly big ranch houses. They have to be fairly big this way because they're only one story this way. We had to wait to buy a house because people really wanted and still want those houses, and they don't come on the market very long. We've been in our house for 13 years. We knew nothing about this concept that we're just learning about in the last couple of weeks, and your comment really made an impression on me. Well, you know, we'll probably put in that you can't change the outside walls or the roof shape or anything because we don't want it to...
Could you testify to the board, please?
No.
To the board, please? Just to us, yeah.
We don't want people to see a change in the outside of the houses. What about the people who are living in the houses? You know, all of a sudden, their ranch house where they can invite their relatives and their children and their grandchildren to come and visit because they have several extra bedrooms? That was what people want and what they do in our neighborhood. Okay, so what I want to let this planning committee, does that mean I'm done or I have one more minute?
Yeah, that's your three minutes, yeah.
Thank you. Well, I didn't have a clock.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have, I should have explained it maybe more thoroughly, but there's those lights on the table in front of you. Green means you have time, thirty, yellow means you have 30 seconds left, and red means your three minutes is up, so I'm afraid your three minutes is up.
I'd just like to have one more sentence.
Yeah, I would say, I was going to invite you to say like maybe one more sentence to get your point across, because I know you didn't, you weren't aware of that.
What we have discussed with our neighbors in Fraser Meadows is nobody likes us. It completely changes our neighborhood and the people who live in it, and if you want to know what will happen to us, will probably move away because we're not going to live in that neighborhood at that point. But we're going to fight this as hard as we can, but thank you for listening.
Thanks for coming to talk to us. So next is, and actually, sorry, folks, please refrain from doing that. It doesn't really, we were actually working pretty hard as a board to cultivate a little bit of a sense of civic communication amongst folks. And if you like something that people say, feel free to like twinkle your fingers, but it needs to stay silent, just to be welcoming to everybody's different opinions, because you have a different opinion than someone else, and you probably want yours to be respected as well. So Brenda Kirk, then Helena Zerubeva, and Darcy Campbell.
Okay, I'm Brenda Kirk, and I'd like to start out by emphasizing that 75 to 80% of the people who responded were opposed to these new regulations. I think we live in the best neighborhood. I mean, I'm almost 80 years old and it's the best neighborhood I've ever lived in in my life. It's Fraser Meadows, as Tom said. The people know each other, we all care about each other, we take care of each other. And if you start putting in auxiliary units, it's going to change the total ambiance, the whole feel of the neighborhood. Right now, there, in my mind, there's a big safety concern. Right now, there are people pull into their garage when they park their cars, and the children ride their bicycles, they ride their scooters up and down the streets. We all watch out for them, they've got a little basketball net, they play basketball. If you start putting all these ADUs in, you're going to have a lot of parking on the streets. The kids will not be able to be seen as they run out into the street. The parents won't let them do that. We have kids as young as infants, up to people in their 90s, living in our neighborhood, and it's just marvelous. I don't believe that any of us will change things as those of us who own it right now. But as soon as someone sells, you're going to have people coming in who are investors, who are going to want to put the ADUs in. And then you start very quickly expanding the population of our neighborhood. The last thing I would like to say is that we are surrounded right now by the university housing units, Willville and Bear Apartments, whatever they're called, Bear Creek. And there are also, there's a small area kind of right by the chancellor's house that are small individual condos. If you go to the other side over by Thunderbird, you have all the Thunderbird apartments and there's Fraser Meadows. And then there's the Branford, there's the stuff on Mohawk. We already have ADUs of many, many people. And so I really believe that our neighborhood has already done its part in housing people. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next up is Helena Zerubeva, Darcy Campbell, and then Mike Schimman.
My name is Helena and I live on Upland Avenue. My husband and I moved to Boulder in 93 from Europe, and we have lived here ever since. In the beginning, we lived in downtown and we loved it. It was walking place. We heard raccoons, we were not scared of the cars because there were almost none cars, no cars on Canyon. Well, look at it, how it looks now. You are scared to drive there because it's packed up. So eventually, we moved to North Boulder, and after 20 years of saving, we were finally able to buy a house there this May, and we had no idea about anything that is planning. Our space is wonderful, it is 15 square thousand feet, and we have mature trees. We enjoy the trees, we have wildlife that comes over, we have raccoons, we have coyotes, we have even marmots living there. And all our neighbors have mature 100-years-old trees, so I cannot imagine if you decide that each of my neighbors who has, let's say, even one acre, suddenly there will be three triplexes, meaning, I mean, one triplex, meaning six adults. Let's say each adult has one kid, and that kid also has a car. So we are talking about nine cars in every single house that is one acre. Our avenue, again, it's Upland Avenue, is so quiet that people still walk there. Kids are playing on the streets, cars are almost nonexistent. Suddenly, everything will change. I strongly oppose... I strongly oppose this, whatever it is, sorry.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Darcy Campbell, then Mike Schuman, and Gwendolyn Bowers.
Hi, my name is Darcy, and I've lived in Fraser Meadows neighborhood for past 18 years, I'm homeowner there, and I urge you, the board, to vote against the proposed ordinance. I feel like it's poorly conceived, and they've been rushed through without input from the homeowners, without enough input. For example, it started out as large homes and lots, and then the large homes went away, and then it just became large lots. And then it was for affordable housing, but now it's not for affordable housing, really. It seems to be not real well-directed. Council wanted to do something, but they didn't know what they wanted to do. The first time I heard about this was in my tax bill in about April, and the same for all my neighbors on all my street in Fraser Meadows. And most, and as you've heard, most neighbors' residents in Fraser Meadows and North Boulder and East Boulder are totally opposed to this, and I'll tell you why. Well, for one thing, we don't want the density, the traffic, but what's going to happen? Because I was at the open houses, both of them, and there were quite a few builders who were there, and they were so excited about this because they want to buy these places when they open up because they know they can put two ADUs in, then they'll live in the home for a while, and they'll make a ton of money, and they'll sell it. And the same with splitting up homes into three condos. So I think it's a magnet for speculators, and it's not something homeowners are going to do because there's only 35 ADUs in all of RE zoning. So that's not something people are itching to do. We've already got about 50% rentals in Boulder, and our neighborhood doesn't want more rentals. As a side note, I really hope the 7,500 square foot in the RE zoning does not pass because I live in RE zoning, and I don't want to live right next to a triplex. I live next to a lot where I have a 95-year-old neighbor. It's a very large lot. When she dies, it'll be sold, and a triplex will go in there. That's what I'm imagining. That would be in Phase Two of these ordinances. It's not allowed in Phase One. So there's no reason to think that this ordinance will provide affordable housing, which was its original purpose. So please consider how you would feel if your neighborhood were upzoned, and you, with little notice, and the process was rushed through. The process seems like a land grab by the city from those of us with large lots. The city will get more density, the developers and absentee landlords will make lots of money, and homeowners will be punished with a neighborhood they don't recognize.
Thank you, Darcy.
Don't want to live in anymore.
Mike Schuman, Gwendolyn Bowers, and then Gonzalo Palacios.
Thank you. My name is Mike Schuman. I emailed you some comments yesterday, and I'm not going to repeat those. My wife and I have owned a house in Carolyn Heights at 1985 Calmia for the last 37 years and plan to stay there as long as we're able to. We have no intention of moving, but to address Commissioner Montoya's concern, it's not us doing this to ourselves that we're concerned about, it's our neighbors. As soon as their lot sells, then right next to our patio, two ADUs go in, and under this ordinance, that's not called an increase in density. I'd like to read to you what the North Boulder Sub-Community Plan says about density. For existing residential areas, maintenance of existing zoning, density, and lot sizes. For new residential areas, a diversity of housing types, sizes, and price ranges. So I think it's disingenuous for all the written materials about this to say this proposal is consistent with the North Boulder Sub-Community Plan because it's not if it's applied to the existing lots and houses that were intended to be preserved as they were under that plan. That's why we're concerned. You saw the numbers at the public meeting, 80% opposed. We polled our neighbors, and at least 90% of the people in Carolyn Heights are opposed to these proposals. When we asked at the public meeting, how can you claim with a straight face there's no increase in density? The answer was, well, these are accessory units to the primary house. I honestly couldn't believe I was hearing that because you're also proposing at the same time to increase the number of people. You can't have it both ways. Either there's no increase in density and no more people, or if you increase the number of people on every lot, that's an increase in density. So something is not right about the way this is being proposed. I just want to urge you to vote against this. As I said, the people who own these lots, and many of us have owned these lots for 20 to 50 years, aren't asking for this. And the staff's own memo says almost none of this will happen, especially in the RR zones. Then why are you doing this to us? That's my question, and I urge you to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
I just want to make a comment for everyone. We're not doing this. We're here to vote on it. So if people could refrain from shouting at us, we're here to hear you and to make a decision. We don't come up with policy here on this board. We're excited to hear from you, though.
Yeah, thanks, Peter. Okay, so thank you, Mike. Next is Gwendolyn Bowers, Gonzalo Palacios, and Joe Bowers.
My name is Gwendolyn Bowers. I live in Fraser Meadows. I've lived in my home for 57 years. When this area was zoned, it was zoned with the idea that it would have very different kinds of houses. There is, of course, a Kaiser Hospital there, there's a senior citizen building there, there are condominiums, there are triplexes and duplexes, and in the middle, single homes. Also, there's a small lake and a small park. If you start dividing these houses into smaller places and allowing them in these larger lots, you're going to have young families that can afford these places. They move on. We're going to have a very fluid society there. If you go to Apache, which is now, which runs parallel to 36, we have students down close to Foothills Parkway, and we have the university encroaching upon our side to the west. We have bicycles going very rapidly from these two places. They are young people, they need to get to where they're going, but go for a walk and you take your life in your hands. Most of the people in these single-family homes are older people. Some of them, like myself, are in their 80s, some are in their 90s. Do we really want to cut up those homes and penalize these people for being in their homes this long? Some of these people are now moving out into senior citizen memory care. Their houses will go on sale. Somebody could come and speculate and put duplexes and triplexes in those houses. I, for one, do not want to live next to a family that has, or a house that has three other houses and four other families and half a dozen children. Because the traffic will be greater, the crime will increase, and you'll have to have more police policing it. As I think that the university is maybe planning for married student housing to come in on this. This plan is a very poor plan. Yes, you can do, make these arrangements for future buildings, for future areas, but please leave Fraser Meadows alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Gwendolyn. Gonzalo Palacios, then Joe Bowers, then Kurt Nordbeck.
Hello, thanks for having this hearing and for all the information from the planning. I was pretty surprised to go to the open house. I thought everybody was going to be super excited about these things. I was one of the few, I think, that said I'm in full support of these things. It seems that it goes with the intentions of the city. I'm pretty surprised to hear that people are concerned about character because I have a lot in Redwood, it's 20,000 square feet, and just walking distance from there, I counted like nine schools, you have Crestview and Centennial. My daughter goes to BWK, it's a beautiful kindergarten, and my other daughter wants to attend Tara. And it's sad to know that all our teachers in these schools, they cannot live in Boulder. And I think one of these things with ADUs, it would be super useful for the people who are taking care of us, right? And also, when I hear about traffic or crime or those things, if you just go south of Ires into Glenwood or the other schools there, it's fine. I mean, there's more density, but there's no crime or crazy traffic in these other neighborhoods where you have a house in 7,500 square feet. So I really don't get all these arguments. And lastly, I think the good thing about this law is that, as you were saying, Lepita, the owners who are represented right here are the ones who are going to build these ADUs, are the ones who are going to bring the character, and are the ones who are going to be the renters. So the laws that I see right now where you say that, okay, the owner has to live in the unit, well, the main house, and have the ADUs, that just reduces the interest and the speculators. Another thing that we've seen is that these huge homes that are coming up all the way in North Boulder, like around Orchard and all these things, they're cookie cutter horrible homes of 5,000 square feet. And that's where the character is going away, right? So I urge you to just vote for this thing, and then don't be worried about Phase Two until it comes, right? Let's do Phase One, let's figure it out. It's going to be super slow, somebody said 35 ADUs, well, it should be okay. And then the concept of persons and stuff, 12 people in half an acre, I think it's fine. I mean, I don't see really a problem. But really, do it for teachers or people in the gym or working at Colorado, whatever, Athletic Club or whatever else that we use the services because they really want to live in Boulder. I have 10 seconds. This reduces traffic. People from Longmont are not going to want to live there, but people who live there are going to want to walk to work and help all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joe Bowers, Kurt Nordbeck, and then Casey Cook. If you guys want to kind of come up and stack up.
Joe Bowers. I've lived in Fraser Meadows since 1962. We built a home there in 1962, and I remember Mr. Fraser Senior driving through our area every evening to be sure everything was doing according to what he wanted to be done. And it's a nice area, it's been a good area, and I see the streets now are at capacity. I think the neighborhood is at capacity. I don't think it's in need anymore. Now, if you're going to pursue this ordinance, take it over to the law school. It'll be a wonderful graduate study for them for the whole year to explain this thing.
Appreciate the humor. Next is Kurt Nordbeck, then Casey Cook, and then Hannah Hughes.
Hi, Kurt Nordbeck, 777 Delwood Avenue. I support this proposal. It's really about providing modest additional options for property owners, giving them a little more freedom in how they can use their property. It will also protect existing homes from demolition, which is very important to me as a former Landmarks Board member, and hopefully it can allow a few people who currently work in Boulder but can't find a home here to live close to where they work and avoid their commute. This proposal affects not just the RE and RR zones, it affects all of Boulder. It affects the global climate, so please keep all the bigger picture in mind as you're deliberating and represent the entire city. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Next up is Casey Cook, then Hannah Hughes, and Kathy Wellman.
Excuse me? Do you push a button here? Okay. Hi, my name is Casey Cook. I represent the group Preserve Arizona. I've spread out copy of the petition we have started, very simply states, "We, the undersigned residents of Boulder, Colorado, oppose any changes to the existing RE and RR zoning regulations or ordinances. We intend to support city council candidates in this year's election who will preserve our zoning. As of today, there are 664 signers, all of them city of Boulder residents. In San Francisco, California, the poster child of increased density, any area under consideration for increased density must be near adequate transportation. A number one, must be, it's required. It's called smart development. Some areas in the RE and RR zones in Boulder are up to eight blocks away from the nearest bus line. In Boulder, they forgot about the smart. From the Boulder City Council retreat of January 2018 came the concern that large houses would change the neighborhood character. There are at least 664 of us that are positive this proposal will change our neighborhood I heard talk about the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. Its revisions were adopted in 2017. Well, there's a document that's been around a lot longer. It's called zoning regulations. This is the document people count on when planning one of the biggest purchases of their life, that's their home. If this proposal is approved, I guess we simply toss out the zoning regulations when it comes to planning because they simply can't be counted on. As you've heard, at the last open house concerning this proposal held on the 19th of this month, 80% of the responses were against any change. Please do not pass this ordinance.
Great, thanks, Casey. Next up is Hannah Hughes, and then Kathy Wellman, and then Mike Hart.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Hughes, and I've lived in Carolyn Heights since 1978, and I'm here to oppose the efforts to increase the density in the neighborhood by changing the RR-zoned area. We purchased our property precisely because of the lot size, the character of the neighborhood, the generous spaciousness, the relatively low traffic, the absence of streetlights, thank you.
Thank you. And the quiet.
As proposed, the increased density would significantly change our neighborhood, would increase noise, traffic, and pavement, all those new driveways. Rentals could outnumber owner-occupied homes. Phase One is just the first step towards increasing density. As we look towards Phase Two, I see pictures that show actually six units on a lot for those that are up to 30,000 square foot or more. I don't happen to believe that all of Boulder should be infilled and made higher density. Even cities larger than ours benefit by having areas of varying character. Having some less dense areas also allows for more diverse habitats for animals and plant life. Attractive urban life is more than just the statistical efficiency of higher density. It also involves more flexible transport options and neighborhood clusters of shops and services. One argument presented in this revision is that it would increase the diversity of housing options. One can argue that the proposal takes away one option as well, since it seeks to eliminate the existing- the existing density level of our neighborhoods. Our neighborhood in Carolyn Heights has already gone through a lot of changes in recent years, and we have adapted. Once the construction is done, the traffic is not terribly increased. The proposed changes could radically alter the character of our neighborhood, and I fear not for the better. I urge you to oppose this initiative to increase the number of houses on our large lots. Thank you.
Thanks. Next up is Kathy Wellman, Mike Hart, and Lori Shepherd.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. I'm in a disadvantage tonight. I got four hours of sleep last night for various reasons, and so please bear with me. First of all, my name is Kathy Wellman. I live in Carolyn Heights. My husband and I have lived there for 20 years. Obtaining that lot was very unique, so I want to share this story with you. We live on 23rd Street. We found out about a lot for sale, and we had wanted to move into a property-type of area. And just by chance, we were able to get in on the bidding war that occurred, because there was another couple that had found out about the house, too. Well, you know what that does to your bank account? I went back to subbing to get some more money. I had retired from teaching. My husband said, okay, I won't retire from Noah yet. I'll keep working. Well, we decided that the bidding war was going to be too much, and we were going to have to get out of there. So the owner came to us and said, you know, I found out that the other people who were bidding against you want to scrape the lot and build their own mansion, whatever, so I'm going to sell it to you all. He lost thousands of dollars on that deal. He had built that house by himself, brick by brick. He did things that were very unconventional in '57. He did a great framing work that was more sturdy boards than were needed. He put extra insulation everywhere. And he also designed his own solar panels that were way ahead of his time. So when we got the house, he knew we weren't going to do anything to the outside. We did remodel the inside, and we've been very happy there for 20 years. Our neighbors are delightful. And according to, looking at the plan here that's up, according to Mr. Havlik, Spence Havlik, in this morning's paper, a man whom I admire, he had said that no compelling multi-government vision of what we want to see for Boulder in the next 10 to 15 years exists. There are numerous Boulder County master plans and about 22 city master plans. There seems to be no coordination of those plans. I found out about this plan because I read it in the paper, and we couldn't go to a May 28 meeting because we were out of town. But since then, we've had, you know, we weren't on a phone poll, we weren't on a petition poll from the city on how do you think, or getting a questionnaire going. So we really wanted to go to the city meeting last Monday, talk to some very nice people. I believe the city is not the big bad wolf, and I would like to see us be able to have input on the next phase, even the first phase, of this plan to change our neighborhood. One of the goals of the city is to have energy efficiency and climate sustainability. Oh, shoot.
Yep, that's it.
Well, that's it. Thank you for listening. And Mike, it's your turn now.
Thanks very much. So Mike Hart, then Lori Shepherd, and then Zani Change.
We ready? Good evening. My name is Mike Hart. I'm Janice Garberini. I live at 2255 Meadow Avenue with my wife. I've lived there for 40 years. This is a house in Carolyn Heights. Just so you know, Carolyn Heights was platted in Boulder County in 1954. And we were the second occupants of the house that we now live in. Over that 40-year period of time since we've lived there, I've been involved in a lot of different community activities in Boulder, and one of which was the development of the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan, spending many weekends, long hours, trying to hammer out something that met the needs of everybody in that part of North Boulder. And one of the things that I was particularly concerned about, and why I was involved, was because I wanted to preserve our zoning and our density. Over the 40 years that I've lived there, we've had at least three examples where property owners in our subdivision came to the city and wanted to subdivide. Even though the zoning wouldn't allow it, we had a couple of lots that were illegally divided, and people came to get a building permit, and, you know, the city said, no, you can't do that. You know, you have an illegal lot. You don't have a buildable lot. So there's always, I've always seen the pressure on the land. And we're seeing the pressure on the land again, and I'm here to encourage you to not support this change. I think it's a violation of the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan, which states, as Mike indicated earlier, maintenance of existing zoning, density, and lot sizes for existing residential areas is one of the goals of the Subcommunity Plan as adopted by the city. And even though I've tried to understand how it could be that you could have additional ADUs without having increased density, I'm still at a loss. I'm still grappling with that concept. And the same with duplexes and triplexes. As a matter of fact, in the definitions in your folder, it says a triplex means a structure containing three dwelling units. That seems to me to be a good definition of an increase in density. So I would suggest that there's a fundamental disconnect between what's being proposed tonight and the Subcommunity Plan that was approved back in 1994. Thank you.
Thanks. That was Lori. Is that Mike? That was Mike. Okay, cool. Sorry, I got a little confused.
My name is Lori Shepherd. I live in North Boulder. We have been in the Carolyn Heights and North 26th Street neighborhood for more than 40 years. I'd like to make an initial comment about teachers, since I'm an educator, and a former administrator at CU. And I would urge you to use your power with the city council to urge that more study be done, and that we try to understand what the 62,000 in commuters are looking for. And I can tell you from all the teachers that I know, that many of them lived in one of the apartments like what you're building so many of. And then they leave as soon as they get married and want to have children, because they want three bedrooms and they want a yard. And so it's very hard for me to believe that good study has gone on about what this densification is going to do. I do understand how it will serve the person who maybe is a single person in the gym or waits on table, but I don't believe that it's really serving all of the problems. I hope, now speaking to you, as you asked that we do, that you ask more questions about this affordability, because I asked questions. If in our neighborhood in Carolyn Heights, the lots are going for $2.5 million, even if turned into a triplex, I don't think those would be affordable. And apparently, just yesterday, so I haven't been able to get a copy of an analysis that was done, either it's going to be affordable and therefore no one will do it, or you won't feed that in, or it won't pass that it must be affordable. And then the answer to your question about what are we afraid of? We are afraid of, and I've been trying to think of a word, you know, because I'm really embarrassed when people make fun of developers in the paper, and then somebody writes an editorial about how that's not nice, et cetera. So I've thought of dark money developers, because there are the developers who help us rebuild our house on the exact same old footprint. But then there are developers that are, a lot of times, are out of state, where the money is coming from out of state, and they're making a lot of money, and they do max on every one of the things that you allow, and it does change character. My last point would be not to think of us just as NIMBYs. We did a lot to create the character of the North 26th Street neighborhood, and we actually believe that the people who walk in our neighborhoods from all the denser areas all around, and I interview them now since this has happened, they come there and they walk their dogs there, because we are almost like a greenbelt for them. And they're coming from the denser areas to the east, because I've asked them where they live, and they thank me for my flowers.
That's great. So we have a mistake in our list. Up there, number 15, Zani Change, is actually, was meant to say zoning change, but the actual person's name is Janice Garberini. So Janice, if you're ready, you are now renamed Zoni Change.
I was really looking forward to seeing Zoni Change.
I know. Pretty amazing.
It's like a roller derby name.
Okay, I'm not Zoni Change, but my name is Janice Garberini. I live in Carolyn Heights. My husband and I both grew up in Colorado. We love the open skies, the meadow larks in the backyard, but we actually moved away. We lived in California. We lived in a small lot, and we had a neighbor that was 10 feet away. We could hear her on the phone at night, as well as I suppose she could hear us. So when we decided to move back for family and Colorado, we wanted a large lot, and we moved into Carolyn Heights. And we like our neighborhood. We think it's a wonderful neighborhood. But I guess one of the things that I was just really surprised about was, the explanation is that Boulder wants to increase density and have more affordable housing. And yet, I found this article in the paper today, in the Daily Camera, and it talks about how the Long Gardens on the ballot this fall is going to be a conservation easement, possibly. So that's going to be funded by the taxpayers of Boulder. And that's a 25-acre property. That's almost the size of Carolyn Heights. And why is, it's a wonderful place, Long Gardens, but why is that property sacred? And the people who own properties currently, their lots are not sacred. It seems that for 25 acres, at the six units per acre, that's 150 units. So if you really want more density and more development, why not let this area be developed instead of asking people who already own homes and have a neighborhood to change? So I guess what I'm saying is, there are other alternatives to just this proposal. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Janice. I'm sorry about the name thing. So next up is Mark Abloitz, and he's pulling time with Enid. Yeah, so we need to find out. Yep, good, thank you if you were here. So you have five minutes.
Thank you very much.
Timer?
So thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Mark Abloitz, and I live in Fraser Meadows. My belief is that this is a very bad idea. Why? Fraser Meadows has been in the inner portions, single-family, for 60 years. Not for 10 years, not for 20 years. 60 years. It has character. There's no good reason to change this. In fact, it's a terrible idea to change the character of a neighborhood that's been around for 60 years. The inner portions of Fraser Meadows, do you know this, has a deed covenant that says "single-family residency." Now, I believe the neighbors in Fraser Meadows would fight any changes in that deed covenant. And that could lead to somebody putting an ADU, the neighbors coming together, fighting it, and you have to tear the ADU down. It could happen. I've lived in Fraser Meadows for 30 years, very happily. I don't want it to be changed to a rental area. Yes, I would move, surely, and I think my neighbors would move with this. If Boulder wants more density, which is fine, they should build apartments, just like they're building out in the diagonal, but not take an area like Fraser Meadows, the inner portion, that's been there 60 years and change it. This is just not a good idea. It's not well-thought-out, and it can have major consequences that you don't anticipate now. Guaranteed, it can have very bad consequences. I think you have to get realistic. And I think the board was talking about trying to get realistic when they say, well, are you talking about a single family? Well, all of a sudden, three ADUs could be six people. I invite every one of you to come over to my house, or walk the neighborhood with you, and ask what would happen if every house had six, three families, six or more people with six cars? Ask yourself, and I'm telling you, it could happen. It could happen. This is a complex idea, as indicated tonight by yourselves asking staff, well, please explain this again. If somebody has to be explained again and again, isn't this an indication of complexity? Surely, it is. And it will change the character of a well-established neighborhood. I don't think this is what you want. Certainly not what all of my neighbors want. We've been here. This is not people that have moved in for five years, eight years, 10 years. We're talking about myself, 30 years. We're talking about others for 50 years. The character of the neighborhood changes a little bit. When I moved into Fraser Meadows, there were no kids around. My kids were the only ones. Well, they've grown up, and young people are moving in, kids are moving in. This is what you should want, not, not, to take houses, 14,000 square feet, 15,000 square foot lots, and put three ADUs with three real different families and six cars. It could happen. Believe me, it could happen. Bad idea. Shouldn't happen. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thanks very much. So next up is Ken Hyphill, Sherri Hall, and then Eileen McMahon.
My name is Ken Hyphill. I live at 2110 Meadow Avenue, which is in Carolyn Heights. I bought my house over 30 years ago and raised my four children there. It's a wonderful neighbor in Boulder, and I would like to keep it and have it remain as is. I would like you guys to consider the uniqueness of our neighborhood. Boulder has a lot of unique characteristics, but two of the things that I really like about it is it has a lot of wildlife in it. I personally have seen deer, bear, coyote, foxes, rabbits, numerous bird species. I like that because it's not dense. And also, a lot of people walk and bike on our street to enjoy what our neighborhood has to offer. Please don't change the zoning of our neighborhood community. I feel that the existing neighborhood uniqueness will be diminished if rezoned. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ken. Cheryl Hall, then Eileen McMahon, and Jeffrey Young.
My family moved to Carolyn Heights in 2015, and now by October 1st, my neighborhood character could all be taken away from me. Why? Why so fast? Engagement events, questionnaires? I was informed about this proposal two weeks ago by my neighbor. I hadn't heard anything. Today's presentation indicated that the proposal had been drawn up without a scientific survey. So when are they planning on doing that? You don't have a scientific survey. You don't know that this will sustain affordable housing. The proposal is terribly short-sighted by not considering subdivisions, condominiums, and what will become of the character of our neighborhood. And it seems there is way too much confusion before pushing forward with Phase One's complicated code with its slick developer ideals that haven't been clearly hashed out, let alone Phase Two, which seems, what, up for grabs? The proposal is irresponsible to the environment. Ponds and water sources in these areas are already contaminated. More density would increase the problem. The proposal is terribly invasive via the infrastructure it will require. My seven-year-old son will no longer be able to ride his My seven-year-old son will no longer be able to ride his bike in the streets. There currently are no sidewalks, and the peaceful roads are the reason why we bought this lot. The proposal goes against the reason why the area was zoned, as it was in the first place. As mentioned in the presentation, the reasons have not been considered at all. No change here in these small areas are going to help the teachers living in Denver and Longmont. Contrary to points presented in the proposal, our area does create diversity where plenty of other subdivisions and condominiums are going up everywhere else. We see this construction, and we don't want it in our area. High-density areas can be developed on the outskirts of the city. Better paths can be built to get to and from these areas. There are many, many other ways to achieve affordable Boulder than changing the zoning that I purchased. My family and I ask city planners to dutifully report my views to council. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Cheryl. Eileen McMahon, then Jeffrey Young, then Larry McDonald.
Hi, good evening. I'm Eileen McMahon, and I live in the Country Club residence. It's very pretentious names. You can tell them that very country club. But my husband and I specifically picked this neighborhood. We had lived in Chicago. We were tired of density. We looked at different neighborhoods in Denver. We looked at neighborhoods around Pearl Street. And we picked where we are because of the density. And I agree with much of that's already been said about the proposal. I disagree that it will be a positive for all of Boulder, and it will definitely be a negative for ours. I think it's riddled with contradictions. I don't envy the task of pulling together what do we want our town to be like, large homes and not-large homes, diversity. I don't think this meets that. I don't know what the creative solution is, but I think this is selling short, and I think it's handing over to the developers a wish. I think that maybe as an owner, I won't turn my home into a triplex, but six homes are up for sale, and I think a developer would have their eyes scoping, scoping, and it would be, I don't know you well, I didn't have time to prepare, so I'm sorry for this word, but I do believe it would be naive to think our neighborhoods wouldn't be dramatically changed. But my point is, I know quite clearly how I feel about it, and I know in the election what I'll be doing. I signed the petition. The last presidential election has woken me up to, I can't sit back. And I will be very proactive in making sure I have a representative on the city council that votes against this ordinance. I canvass at the mid-year elections, not just in my neighborhood. I help friends in their neighborhoods where they want it to be done, and I will be organized, and I will make sure my neighborhood doesn't change, at least not with a better plan. I understand at some point I might have to make a sacrifice on my personal life for the greater essence. Issues of equality and diversity and energy conservation are important to me. I do not see those planned, meeting those needs. So I have zero reservations in saying I'm against it, and I will vote for people who believe in that, and I will do my darndest throughout Boulder to make sure that's what the city council looks like. So now it's about the vote and me being proactive and making sure it's not just me voicing it to you. It will be shaping it. So for what it's worth, that's what I will be getting to know in more detail. I appreciate the effort to inform our neighborhood about what was happening. I only learned two weeks ago. I've had very little time. By the time November comes around, I will have put much more effort into reading and understanding and speaking logically about it, so that as I bring other people who might not be aware, I will be ready to make my point very clearly. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Eileen. Next up is Jeffrey Young, then Larry McDonald, then Steve Pomerantz.
My name is Jeffrey Young, and I live with Dorothy Pacheco, also in attendance tonight. And we are residents of the Country Club neighborhood that is part of the RE discussion presented today. I moved to this neighborhood based in 2016, so maybe I'm part of the problem. But it was based on the community as it is, with rules in place that have been used successfully to defend against this type of proposal. In the proposed area, as late as this year, the current zoning has been defended based on our current laws and restrictions. So there's precedent that should be considered that has not been presented today. Let me also start with Slide 15. It might have been 16. It was hard to read on the slide, but it was the one showing the polling from the open house the other night. I'm not sure how this proposed ordinance can be considered when this many people have taken time to come forward, sign petitions, and voice their strong objection. This voice in particular, I believe, has to be considered above all else. The proposed ordinance makes it sound like we are talking about new construction, when in fact this would be largely reconstruction, albeit on existing structures with similar walls and roofs. To answer Councilwoman Montoya's concern, this is pure economics, driven by the potential for profit, without the value of any social remediation. And as the staffers have clarified, while there are current opportunities for the creation of ADAs, the new proposal will allow residents to sell at even higher prices, thereby increasing impact. I'm going to steal the term dark developers. Will proactively and aggressively now purchase property and forever change the landscape of existing neighborhoods. I would also ask the council to please refer to Slide 27. 115 dwelling units have the potential to turn into 747 in RE designation, which is a 650% increase. Not including the density calculation, which was extremely confusing. Not only will this lead to discrimination, as is pointed out by Councilman Zuckerman, but also, but as an example, if I were to add an ADU to our property, it would impact six neighbors, none of whom have the same opportunity to add an ADA. Seems disproportionate to me. Quick side note, Policy 7.11 assumes no such programs are currently in place. So please understand this proposal is a material change in the value and livability of our community, and if I wanted this type of density, we'd live in California. I urge council to vote against this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much. Next up is Larry McDonald, then Steve Pomerantz, then Artie Immerman. And if you would like to speak to us and you haven't signed up, I think you know where to do it.
Okay. Thank you very much. My name is Larry McDonald. I live at 2160 Linden Avenue in Carolyn Heights. You've heard a number of us speaking to you tonight. I see a couple of familiar, friendly faces up here tonight. Good to see that. I had five years on the Open Space Board of Trustees, and I know the commitment, the time, and the energy that you put in as a planning board member, and we really do appreciate the work that you do. Let me say, this was my first deep dive into planning in the city of Boulder, and it's not easy. I mean, you probably know that very well. This is a tough thing to get your hands around, and you know, I've worked really hard to try to understand the proposal that planning staff gave you and showed us a couple of weeks ago. It was not, it was not easy. But let me say, just as a person who's very much a longtime citizen of Boulder and very much aware of the sort of how we try to do things here, one of the first things that would surprise me was when, after the May 28th, the city council meeting where the focus shifted just to the RE and RR zones, what surprised me was that there was no outreach to the 4% of the households that are actually the target of these changes. No attempt to communicate with us, no attempt to ask us, you know, what our views were. We in our neighborhood, as you've heard, went door-to-door to ask every one of our neighbors, "What do you think?" And 90% of our neighbors said, "We don't want this." I think it might have been helpful for planning to have learned what people's sentiments are before moving to this stage. I also found it absolutely puzzling, and you know, I am a lawyer, but I had to say, this was really stunning, that somehow, the idea is that three dwelling units on a lot is really only one dwelling unit. And that's because it's, the other two are so-called accessory dwelling units. And those aren't real dwelling units. They just have other families in their rentals, and they will have other cars, and they will have other people. But they're only one, they're only one dwelling unit. That's just stunning to me. I really, you know, as a lawyer even, I cannot imagine how you could do it like that. I also found it really extraordinary that the idea that we could now have three houses on a lot, we could have many more people living on each lot, and we could have triplexes and duplexes, does not change the character of the neighborhood or increase density. Again, I just don't see how that works.
Thanks, Larry.
I would ask that, look at the planning process, because I really think that's the heart of the problem. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Larry, and thanks for being on Open Space. That's no light lift either. Steve Pomerantz, then Artie Immerman? Yeah, to Cindy, please.
Steve Pomerantz, 33517th Street. I'm a former city council member, and I'm here testifying in that role. I'm not a resident of the areas that are immediately affected, but I can see where this thing is headed, and I will be in the next go-around for sure. One point quickly about this. If this thing goes forward, forget any tax passing for affordable housing. The neighbors and the people who live in this town will be so angry about this that nothing will go forward. With regard to your role as a former council member, your job is to delve into the details and see if the facts and analyses support the recommendations. My observation is this ordinance is inappropriate and premature in any number of ways. I request that you tell the council that. Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan 210 directs you to, quote, "work with neighborhoods to protect and enhance neighborhood character and livability and preserve the relative affordability of existing housing stock." This ordinance does nothing to do this, quite the contrary. It tries to jam as much development to these neighborhoods as a BBC land use map allows. Many people have spent their life savings buying these houses, and they don't deserve this kind of treatment. This whole process started, if you remember, with concern about large houses on these lots. What does this ordinance do? It supports producing exactly what the intention was trying to avoid. The input process frankly stinks. There has been no effort made to distinguish what the people who live in the affected areas think versus everybody else. Even at this meeting on Monday, there was an opportunity, there was a questionnaire. You could have put in what zoning category you live in. Somebody could have helped people figure that out. No, that was avoided. The 7,500-square-foot proposal that's in one of your options, that was not even available at that time. And also, I point out, you'll see on Page 3, that one of your Housing Advisory Board members suggested people game the system with the dot process, so the dots are of no value. The expanding the allowance for ADUs is premature. The ordinance only just got passed. And so you have no good data to see what people are going to do. This should be years in the future, not like now. There have been no market or economic analyses. You have no idea what people are really likely to do. I did a Zillow analysis, and I tell you that 5,000-square-foot lots, people are selling houses on them for $1 million. So it gives you an idea about the affordability. The five-year time delay is inadequate. We just had two houses built near my neighborhood. Four bedroom suites, three extra bedrooms per, only three unrelated allowed now. That's a five, out five years, they're going to be a co-op, and they're guaranteed. The developers are quite happy to wait five years. And the numbers are no good because the staff never did work to identify HOA.
Steve, you know the rules. Please wrap up. Thanks.
There you go.
Next up is Artie Immerman, and then Pete Mercer.
Hi.
Hi, Artie.
Hi. My name is Artie Immerman. I had no intention of speaking, but here I am. I just felt compelled. I've lived here since 1977. I moved here to open a business on the brand-new Pearl Street Mall. I lived at 22nd and Walnut. I thought it was heaven for about a few months, and I couldn't handle the density. I was all of 30 years old, and I moved and eventually ended up in Carolyn Heights. I have owned a piece of property up there for 35 years, raised my children. Of course, you've heard from my neighbors, I am concerned that none of us were consulted. I did go to the open houses. I went to the open house. I've certainly read my mail. We've mobilized as a neighborhood. And I just want to say that I think what is going to happen, I'm pretty sure what is going to happen, is that a developer is going. It's not going to be my choice. I live on an acre, so I could have, I understand I could have up to six units on my acre, my 45,000 square feet. I do think a developer is going to come in. And where the eight of us live on a short 1,000-foot stretch of Norwood, there could be 48 houses instead of, 48 homes instead of eight homes. That's 96 cars and I don't know how many people. So I'm concerned that, I'm concerned that we weren't consulted, and I don't think it's obviously a great idea. I have lived here and volunteered with some great teachers in this room. I've supported all kinds of organizations in this town, and I have great respect for the city council, and I ask you to revisit this very carefully, and I urge you not to accept this. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Artie. Last up is Pete Mercer.
If there's anybody else who wants to speak, now's the time to register with Cindy.
Hello, my name's Pete Mercer. We live on Laurel Avenue and Country Club Estates. We've lived here for 17 years. Everyone in our neighborhood has put a lot of work and money in their homes. Our neighborhood has a lot of pride in our yards and neighborhood. We have different ages in our neighborhood, young and old, including young families who moved into the area because of the nice yards and lots. Just today, when I arrived home from work, I met one of our young neighbors and their newborn baby. When I talked to them and mentioned that we were coming to the meeting today, they both expressed that they were also against this new proposal. We bought in this area because of the beautiful yards and single-family homes. We are firmly against zoning change. We ask that more detailed analysis be completed to ensure a well-informed decision is ultimately made. Thank you for your consideration on this important matter, not just to us, but to Boulder as a community. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. And since we have no other folks signed up, we're done with this sort of public hearing part of this. Thank you guys all for coming and sitting through all of that and for coming to speak to us. I know it's a lot, it's a lot to ask, so we're going to take about a 10-minute break. If some of you want to go home and watch us on TV, you can do that. It's super exciting.
Channel 8.
Yep, Channel 8. And so we'll give us about 10 minutes. All right, folks, at some point, we've got to continue the meeting here, so if you want to keep talking, you can, you can do that downstairs. So we are now going to have our deliberations and do what we need to do here. We've got a set of key issues. Can we get those back up on the screen, one way or the other? I'm going to suggest we just take them one at a time, if that's okay with everybody.
At some point, I'm going to have some general comments about all of the issues. So whether you prefer to have them at the beginning or the end, it's--
If, yeah, if you want to go ahead and do like a, we could do a passive general comments if everybody wants to do that. Is there other, are there other folks who would like to do that? Maybe we should just hold it until the latter part of the meeting? Okay, so key issue number one is really, do we want to allow two ADUs per lot in RE and RR? And that's just sort of like, we're going to take them separately, so let's see if we can not conflate the different pieces too much. So who wants to kick us off on, on that one? Anybody?
Want a negative poll?
Yeah, we could negative poll. Does everyone agree with the city's, city staff's recommendation on key issue number one?
I do not.
Okay, that would be a good thing to volunteer to say. Lupita, you want to say something as well?
I think we still have some more discussion to do.
Okay. Well, now is the time, so if you'd like to say something, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'll, I'll kick it off. I think the proposal for two ADUs per lot in RE and RR is inappropriate for two reasons. And I'll go back, and, and I'll talk about both process and substance in this. I think the process has been deficient so far for two main reasons. One is because those most affected, those with the lots in the RR and RE zoning districts have not been adequately included in the decision process. We've heard tonight that a lot of these folks first heard about the proposal two weeks ago. Now, we have heard it six months ago, but I don't think that there has been appropriate public process and comment by those who are most likely to have the greatest impact of that. From a viewpoint of substance, it seems to me that this is poorly thought out, partly for reasons that Harmon displayed very clearly earlier, where there seems to be some lack of clarity in, in exactly who might be allowed to live in these ADUs. But also because there's been some deficient definition of density. People get the impression that density means the number of people who are allowed, who, who live in a certain area. And yet this, the whole objective of this effort is to increase density in the sense of providing additional housing in a, in a certain location. And yet people are being told that this is not an increase in density. So there's a problem in, in definition here that is fundamental to both the process and the substance. And I think Mr. Schuman pointed that out very clearly tonight. So I think those two are, in my opinion, fatal flaws and I therefore won't be supporting that.
Great. Anyone else want to speak to that one? Yeah?
Well, one thing that I wanted to point out with regards to the complexity is that it is a product of the arduous process that we went through in 2018 with regards to ADUs in general. And I think that when we, the planning board, kind of sent recommendations to city council, the ADU proposal was actually simpler than what it ended up being. And that's partially because in Boulder, there was a lot, there were a lot of concerns that kind of got addressed by making it more complex. So it actually, this is, this exercise kind of made me go back and look at all the things that resulted from all that, all that kind of moving pieces around on the chessboard to, to make people feel better about the ADU thing that got put in place. So a lot of that complexity really doesn't have anything to do with this proposal. All that definition of who an unrelated person is and a family member, that stuff is just existing stuff that's there. And the complexity around affordable, affordability is stuff that's already there for the single ADU. So, so that aside, all this does is allow some flexibility in areas that do have these larger lot sizes for property owners who might be motivated to take advantage of additional ADUs to be able to do so. I do hear concerns about the developers, you know, maybe coming in and using it speculatively. I would point out that the Kaiser-Marston analysis does emphasize lot acquisition is kind of a metric for looking at this. And their analysis shows that in fact, putting ADUs or duplexes in really doesn't make the, the property necessarily as a whole, all that much more valuable. So really, all it's doing is giving more flexibility for particular owners who might want to, you know, create a, a different living situation for themselves, hopefully. At least that put, made me feel a little less like it was going to just be an open invitation for developers to come in. It is a fairly modest proposal from that standpoint. It, and, you know, things like you can't build duplexes on an empty lot, you can't tear down a building and put up duplexes. And I'm jumping to duplexes, but the same thing with ADUs. You're not, you can't just tear down a home and put up a bunch of ADUs. So, so it does kind of emphasize preserving the home that's already there and just giving some added flexibility. So I don't think that the results are going to be as dire as maybe some people might, might think. So I just wanted to point out those things. But I actually do support this. I'm a little disappointed that we, we are only limiting it to these zones. I think that we could be sharing additional ideas like this across more zones. I actually live across from Fraser Meadows in RL1. I don't like to talk too much about my personal situation, but I live right across baseline from Fraser Meadows and I'm in RL1 and I wouldn't mind being part of, part of this conversation as well. So, anyway.
Great, thanks, David.
I'll make it.
Sorry, Peter.
I don't think, I don't think it's ready. And I think that it should be spread across the whole city. And I think that we're all going to have to have our medicine for the sake of the community, but this is not the right time or the right way it was done. And I don't think it's, it's ready for primetime yet, so I can't recommend it. There's certainly aspects of it I agree that need to be done, but the way it's being done, it's not ready. I won't support it.
Great. Other comments? Lupita?
So I started my council because I really wanted to get out of the heart of things. One of the things I'd like to clarify is I'm one of the youngest people here in the sense that I just arrived in the board, so I feel like I'm always learning. And one of my main goals here is, is to hear from the community and find the common ground because I want to get the sense of the projects that come here are complex many times and we're trying to figure out the best way forward for the city. Not for one neighborhood only, but the entire city, that's our charge. And so we listen to people and so that's what I was trying to do today. And sometimes we get, things are pretty clear and ready to go and some things are may not ready. And some things are, you know, the language is clear, sometimes it's not. So, and we have a range of people with all kinds of skills that can help us clarify, you know, all the issues that come to our board. But I agree with all of my colleagues so far because there's some things that we agree on. I think that as a city, we're looking at increasing affordability, increasing diversity, increasing accessibility to a variety of people. Now, if you look at the people that come tonight-- Now, if you look at the people that come tonight, we didn't have a single family here speaking. So if we want to make it affordable for those people, you know, we need to be able to be welcoming. So some of these goals, I think, go at the heart of that. But yeah, we respect and we enjoy the fact that we have people who have been here for 50 years because they bring character to the city, too. So if you may, for the man, I think, I mean, we want all of these great things to make the city great. So how do we make it all work? My comment is, some things may not be ready yet, but one thing that we can say for sure is that there are plenty of people who care about this issue. And I'm hoping they will continue to be engaged and work with the city to help us make the best decision for the city. And in some cases, it may be that having some of these options accepted. Now, I don't believe that no dark money is going to come into my house to tell me how I'm going to build my house or not build my house. I have that much control over my life, I hope, that I think that most of you will say the same thing. But it is good for us to be aware that this could be a possibility. I just wanted to say at this point is that one thing was clear. I think we're not ready for primetime, but yet, there are some kernels of things that we need to bring to the board in the future. If we want to be in a welcoming community, a welcoming city that values the environment, to values efficiency, values diversity, it is not enough to say the words. You really need to show it with action. So we need to embrace the things that do show those values. And also, if we don't want to have, you know, big houses, then maybe we can accommodate maybe smaller houses. So there's a range of things that we'll have to do. All I would like to say is like homework, you know, for all of us to think, how do we make this the best based on what we've seen so far? Because for me, it's like, maybe we're going to do a redo. That's my thing. Maybe go back and clean up some of these things. Certainly, the language needs to be clear. But I would like to, you know, to ask the community to take it to heart, you know, we're here to work with the communities so that we all win, so that the city reflects all of us and the best of us. So just think of us as we were working with you, not against you. So you're teaching us a lot, but we also need to ask some questions sometimes that come across as like, she doesn't know what she's saying. Maybe because I don't, but maybe because I do. And I just want to hear what's really in your heart, what is really in your mind, and I need to get it out so that I can understand really what's driving you. So if we all agree that we're all on the same page, we all want what is best for the city and to reflect values that are worth having, then I think we all should be on the same team. And then we were going to work it out, and it's going to be good. That's it.
That's great. Harmon?
So, yeah, I think I'm going to make a bit of a general comment because it's going to be more understandable how I'm going to be approaching all the different key issues if I get this out on the table first. I think this ordinance is the product of city council asking staff to do something incredibly hard. And I think that staff has done an unbelievable job in coming up with concepts to promulgate some sort of a solution. But I want to take a step up towards a higher level view of this and remember that the problem was that we were worried about the McMansionization of Boulder in our large lot neighborhoods. And the solution that was offered first to limit house size, which would have done a lot to limit the McMansionization of Boulder, was something that I think people lacked the political courage to enact. And so they put it on staff to come up with a planning solution that would solve the problem differently. And the solution to preserving neighborhood character is to stop the out-of-character construction from being done. And this council didn't have any problems putting a moratorium on commercial development or excessive height over 35 feet when, you know, there wasn't even really a building boom. And yet, we have a documented building boom of scrapes and McMansions. And I would think that, you know, the moratorium would be appropriate for that if that's really the problem. I heard a lot of people say things that I really disagree with. I heard people say things like, if Boulder wants more density, why not let Long's Garden be developed? But Boulder doesn't want more density. Boulder is looking to solve the McMansion problem. You're mischaracterizing the reason why we're here. And I don't think staff was coming up with ways of packing more density into the RE and RR zoning districts. They were simply tasked to stop the McMansionization of Boulder. And I appreciate the ideas that they came up with. You know, I heard a lot of threats around electoral politics. I read a lot of nasty emails calling people names. So I'm not super happy with this whole process. I heard a lot of people say that there wasn't enough outreach. There's an extraordinary amount of outreach that staff did, that the city did. It's all documented in the staff report. And I heard people talking about zoning as a sacred covenant. It's not. Zoning is not a sacred covenant. Zoning is an enacted set of laws that your elected officials vote on with recommendations from their staff and their boards. And the public process allows people to complain about changes in zoning, and people have complained. And when I see a petition with 664 names on it protesting an area that only has 1,900 houses in it, I think, wow, that's a lot of people in the area who really don't like this idea. That's an extraordinary number for a very small number of lots. Maybe the public is telling us that this isn't a great idea, and it is unpopular. And we listen to that. But I think that what Boulder really wants to create is diversity, walkability, 15-minute neighborhoods. We talk a lot about that in our comp plan. And it may be appropriate to kind of admit that RE and RR zoning is exclusive. 30,000 square foot lots, poor people can't afford that. And 15,000 square foot lots. And so if we want to create an inclusive, walkable community with more housing closer to transit, then let's stop protesting when we're talking about creating density in the neighborhoods that are served by transit, have public services, are close to schools, are walkable, are close to downtown. That's where the density should really go. That's, you know, my concept as a former city planner. I mean, I've studied this stuff. And so putting more density in these outlying areas that aren't well-served by transit, yeah, yeah, I agree. You're going to get some teachers and local schools getting a place that's affordable to stay in an ADU. But I'd rather see, you know, an actual... For density purposes, I'd rather see more dense development in the areas that can take it. And if we're trying to stop the McMansionization of Boulder, then we should just tackle that problem head-on and cowboy up and put a limit on the size of houses. And I think that there are enough big houses that have already been built that as people age out of those big houses or move out of those big houses, there are super rich people who want to own big houses, they'll find one. I'm not concerned about super rich people being able to find big houses. It's not the thing that keeps me up at night. So if we stop building big houses now, the city's got enough big houses. So I don't see any problem with having a moratorium on that. So I guess, you know, it's difficult for me to say that I'm going to vote against this because I appreciate the effort that staff put into this. But I also think that it was a solution that staff was asked to create to an intractable problem that it probably would have been better solved with a more direct approach. So I appreciate very much the patience, the effort, the willingness to take the slings and arrows of outrageous criticism. But I'm going to be voting against it. And so I don't support the proposed change to allow to two ADUs per lot in these zoning districts. And if we do end up with two ADUs per lot in these zoning districts, then I definitely think that the occupancy standards should be written in a way that makes it clear that they're available to three nuclear families.
That was really well put. Thank you, Harmon. I agree with pretty much everything you said. And I think really why we have a problem with the process now is a problem that's far upstream of the good work that you guys have attempted to do and that we've attempted to do here when we put our arms around this problem the first time it came in front of us. I really have two minds on the key issue number one here. I really, on the one hand, feel like it's kind of a nothing burger. It's not going to create a lot of change. It seems unlikely to be a source of impact. And at the same time, it doesn't seem like it's going to be a source of increase of housing stock that's meaningful either. So I'm not super compelled on the one side and not too worried on the other side, which leaves me in a weird spot for trying to vote on something. But I don't have to say yes or no on this one just yet. I also feel like the, you know, this goes back to, you know, many eras of Boulder planning history, right? And John, you mentioned some of the stuff before. But one of the last, you know, bigger attempts to this was to deal with some of this was compatible development when some neighborhoods being radically changed by large homes being built in certain zones. And the way that ordinance went through was, you know, you could argue one way or the other, but a certain amount of successful handling this problem. And then we went through the middle-income housing strategy where we looked at like, how do we get middle-income housing to work? And a lot of the work that we did in that process, you know, five, four, five years ago, six years ago, pointed in this direction in some ways, really trying to focus on creating a diversity of housing options for people who already live here or work here and want to stay living or working here. I was talking to a good friend the other day, and she was mad about the traffic. And I said, yeah, you know, how many friends of yours? She's lived here for about 35, 40 years. I was like, over the years, how many friends of yours have moved out because of housing prices, but they still have their job here? She goes, oh, dozens and dozens and dozens. And I was like, well, that's the traffic. That's mostly what the traffic is, is us moving out of town because we want a different housing option, or we can't afford to live here, and then coming back into work every day. And the way to fix that is by providing housing that works for folks who live here of all ranges. And this process has been totally misguided because it has been mis-aimed in order to solve individual people's worry about large homes being built in their neighborhood, breaking the neighborhood character, and making them have whatever feelings they're allowed to have, for sure, is met with, on the other hand, like this conversation about all kinds of other things. And that's been a source of difficulty for us in having a coherent dialogue around it, too. And I know for sure it's really caused a lot of difficulty for staff to try to figure out, how do you run a process that's built on these shaky foundations? So I think, you know, I don't see a lot of problem coming from adding two ADUs per lot. I think, you know, the folks I, friends I had in college who lived in ADUs that were owner-occupied buildings, they developed strong relationships with the folks who lived there, and their behavior was, I think, by and large, tempered by having relationships with folks in the neighborhood. I think there's actually a real strong benefit culturally to having people live in and around you. I live in a more dense zone, and I don't feel like I'm impoverished by doing that. And then factually, it is more sustainable if we can build more housing in town. It does push down our city's vehicle miles traveled per year. It does increase our ability to support transit. It does increase our ability to utilize existing infrastructure without creating new infrastructure. All those things are just factually true. So, you know, I guess in the end, I'm in favor of going to two ADUs per lot because of those things, the sort of macro, big-picture things. But at the same time, I don't feel like this is a magic bullet for really anything. So that's my comment on key issue number one. If anybody else wants to like have another bite of the apple?
I just wanted to add your note, long less in terms of the positives. And one of the things... I'm sorry. One of the things that I noticed from a lot of the people that presented tonight, these are, you know, more, I don't know how to put it, you know, people who have been here for a long time. And some of the benefits of having people living near you, I mean, I come from a culture where having your grandparents near you is an absolute plus for the children, for the elders. And so having people near you really is a positive thing, whether we don't realize it or not. I will see that as a real positive thing. And we haven't gotten to the point where people actually start monetizing, you know, human connections, but we are going there, I can guarantee you. That's the way of the future. Once we start counting how much that's worth, you're going to see how much bad choices we make sometimes by separating ourselves from other humans. But I think that this is why they're so complex, because there are positives and there are negatives, and the task before us was so difficult. And yet, I think that the call issue of the McMansions came back because that was the initial drive. And I don't know what the thing to do at this point is, like, bring it back into focus and send this to council? I don't know what the right thing to do. I mean, those of you who have more experience with the planning board and the relationship with council can tell us what we should do.
We just make a recommendation to council, and they have the whole vote in their hands.
And we can say whatever we went to in that recommendation, like, we like this part but not that part, but really think about that more. Or it takes longer, or go faster, or we can talk about it, or do more public engagement, or sort of the tables up on that.
All right. I think that will be a combination of these things.
Yeah, and I don't know why the political will to actually address it as a large homes issue kind of fell by the wayside. Probably similar kinds of concerns that we heard tonight about other things. And I understand that it isn't directly addressing what it says it is. And I'm sympathetic to that. But it doesn't change my vote because I do... One of the reasons I got on planning board was to try to find ways that we could evolve from very good work in our master, in our BBCP, in our master plan, that really tries to help us understand how to keep Boulder more vibrant. And I see these changes as not being threatening changes that can help us achieve some of those outcomes. And I understand if I'm in the minority, why. Because I, like I say, I am sympathetic to, it's not good to do things that, in a way that isn't understandable to people. But I will go back to saying that, you know, there are a lot of things here that are complex for a lot of reasons. And there's a lot of sausage making that goes into anything. And I'm not sure we'll ever see something that isn't somewhat complex. So it isn't complexity so much. But I do think that if we're going to call it large homes, that it... I can see the point on that. But I still do, in balance, I'm very supportive of the kinds of things we're trying to do here. I think that it shouldn't just be in these two zones. But I would still tend to try to support them.
John?
Right. Not to recapitulate what we've heard and made it very clear. There was one point that Harmon made. Generally, I agreed with just about everything you said. But with respect to the process, I do think that it has been inadequate in several ways. One, as mentioned, dealing with the neighborhoods who are most affected. And two, we just learned this afternoon about a very valuable report, this Kaiser-Marston report, that had extremely relevant information. I haven't even had a chance to read that yet. And I think it is inappropriate to make a decision on, which it looks like we're not about to do right now. But we wouldn't want to move ahead based on a report that we hadn't even had a chance to read yet, which is fundamental to the issues that we're discussing. So I think, for example, that's a problem in the process also.
Yeah.
Peter?
I just say one last thing, and it goes against my intent, the content of what I'm going to say is, we're just piling word after word on top of a foundation that isn't solid. And I think that council should think about how this happened and what happened because it's a shame. it's, it's a shame, and it's a waste of resources and social capital. And they have a responsibility to think about their actions more carefully, and how it trickles down to the people, to the boards, and how this all started, and what happened.
Yeah, if you want to create peace in the valley, this is not maybe the way to have done it.
This is ridiculous.
I want to add, I want to add one last thing before we move on to the next thing, because it's too easy for us all to pile on and continue item one of five in our first agenda item, and make this last forever. I think one role that we do have here is to try to help lend clarity. These are confusing things, and there's nobody who understands the land use code on this board well enough to answer any kind of question off the top of our heads perfectly. So it is complicated across the board. But we do like that in Boulder. Every time we get offered something simple, we find a way to like really, really mess it up.
Really smart.
So, but I do want to say that like the distinction that's happening here on the definition of density is that the current zoning right now isn't in alignment with the underlying zoning, underlying zoning density. So there are two different definitions of density happening here. And one is the one that comes from zoning, and one is the one that comes from the underlying zoning, underlying land use. So when people say it's not a density increase to the land use zoning, that's the, that's the land use zoning one, 60 U per acre. When they say it's, it is an increase to the zoning density than it is, because it is more people living in a given amount of land. So those, both things are true, but it's important to kind of understand the delineation between those things, and to not perpetuate the conflation of them. So let's see if we can move to key issue number two.
Brian, can I, so I had two comments about the way that the code is written around the ADUs. Would now be the right time to talk about those?
Seems like it's not covered somewhere else, so yeah.
Okay. So if the ordinance is going to go, well, the ordinance is going to go forward to council, so I want to provide this advice. In scenario one on page seven, I think no one is going to do the one affordable and one standard ADU if they're limited to 50% of the principal unit floor area. So in the example, having a 1,000 square foot affordable unit leaves just 200 square feet for the standard unit. So I would say that if we're, if we're going to really promote affordable units in the ADUs, better to allow the standard one just to have a plain 25% principal, you know, of the principal unit floor area, instead of splitting the 50% between both units. Just say that the non-deed restricted or non-affordable one gets 25%. And then the affordable one just gets the 1,000 square feet, period. So you'd end up with 1,600 square feet. Maybe you'd have to create an exception if the house was big enough that you'd be exceeding the floor area allowed for the lot. But I think that's reasonable when we're talking about trying to promote an affordable unit. But to make the affordable unit eat up so much of the allowable square footage that the non-affordable unit doesn't even exist, just nobody's going to use that provision at all in the code. So I'd just exempt the affordable unit, give it the whole thousand, and say that the not affordable unit gets 25% of the floor area. And then in 963A, 2A, 3A, and, or A, little A, 2, big A, little 2, and 963A, 3A, 2A. I just want to go on the record as saying, we still need to get rid of this provision that counts legal non-conforming duplexes as ADUs against the 20% limitation factor in the RL districts. And I remember the purpose statement for that is that we're trying to protect the historical neighborhood character. And I would posit that the historical neighborhood character already takes into consideration non-conforming duplexes that were built 70 years ago. And so, and counting them as ADUs is just taking away from the number of ADUs that people who want to build ADUs can actually build in those RL districts. It's not on the agenda for tonight, but I'm just putting that out there because I feel strongly about it. I've been saying it for two years.
I think there'll be a thrilling discussion about that when it comes up.
Can I pile on if we're going to do that?
Yeah.
I also, I've also been uncomfortable with the degree to which we make ADUs subordinate to the primary home on the lot. And one, one thing that really exacerbates that for me is the idea that it's, I think it's the 1,000 square foot or a percentage of the primary, whichever is lowest, which means if you have a small home, the smaller the ADU you're allowed to build, even if your lot's the same size as a lot with a big home.
They're penalized.
I think that's a flaw in our current ordinance, and I would like to see that addressed. So I'd like that on the record.
Yep. Okay. Any other, I guess we go ahead and move to key issue number two. I think that probably covers the additional ADU kind of relevant comments. And this one's basically on occupancy standards for ADUs, one or two additional ADUs in a lot. Who wants to start us off on this one?
Already said whatever.
I think Harmon said his piece on that. I think probably everyone would like to, I'm seeing agreement on the board here, and like shake your head at me if you, if you don't agree when I say this, that we would like to make sure that that part of the code language is as clear as possible, so that folks can anticipate what it means, and we can understand it uniformly too. But does then, beyond that, does anyone have a problem with the idea, you know, if we are doing an ADU, and we had a robust conversation on this previously, it seems appropriate for that to be available for families. So that's where we kind of came to this idea of allowing the occupancy shift to allow more than one person living in an ADU, partially because we've had actual situations where you've had, you know, a single mom, have a baby, find a partner, be forced to move. That doesn't really make a lot of sense.
I'm open to the concept, but I think it's essential to have clarity in the, in the description of what we're talking about before we delve into the substance.
I think we all agreed to that in the beginning, but.
I think as long as we are clear that we mean families, and families take on many different shapes nowadays.
I would, I would personally choose a broad definition of the term family, but at this point, we're using the city's definition.
Right. And so, but if we can be clear on the spirit that we want to support families in the city, that would be great.
Anybody else?
Well, number two is actually only needed though if we voted yes on number one, right? So are we asking for something more from the existing ordinance, existing language, or are we just?
I thought it was just appropriate for us to give staff feedback on that, kind of regardless.
I mean, yeah, absolutely. I would say that if we, if we ever allowed a second ADU on a property, we would have to up.
Not discriminate against families.
Absolutely. This would be required.
I think we're all going to fall on the nondiscrimination side of things. Okay, so that takes us to item three, unless somebody else wants to say something about item two, which is, do we support the proposed change to allow conversion of existing detached dwelling units in the RE zoning districts to duplexes and triplexes from single family? And that goes with keeping the exterior largely the same on a, on a set of criteria that sort of follow the demolition ordinance kind of criteria. Harmon?
So, you know, again, I'm, I'm not going to say that I do support the change for the overarching reasons that I mentioned before. It does make a comment that I think the intent, the concept of keeping the three walls and half the roof makes a lot of sense. You know, the, I thought it was sensitively drafted code, proposed code. I didn't, you know, have the same sort of fears around kids not being able to ride bicycles in streets. I think of every conversion that could possibly take place in the RE and RR did take place. The density would still be lower than the density in a RL district, and kids ride bikes in the RL districts in the street all over Boulder, and don't get hit by cars and play in the street and stuff. You see it in every residential low one and residential low two neighborhood in this city. I think a lot of those fears didn't strike home for me. But, you know, again, I think that there are better ways to promote the goals of council in limiting the McMansionization of Boulder and in an ancillary way, providing a more walkable community and, and more inclusive community in Boulder.
I'll call myself next, actually, just because I want to piggyback on that. You know, I live in Holiday, which is substantially more dense than a lot of what we're talking about here, and more dense it could ever possibly get. And our kids, even little toddlers, play outside quite nicely. And one thing that turns out to be really workable in that environment is if you create the open space as a collective element as opposed to fencing it off, you actually create more of it, and they have more freedom to move amongst households and amongst places. So rather than releasing your child into the cedar fence pen behind your house, you can actually let them be in the neighborhood. So, but on the conversion question explicitly, I don't really feel like, again, it's a bit of a nothing burger for me. You know, if you take a $800,000 or a million dollar house and you convert it into three dwelling units, which is going to take some money through the city process, it's going to take remodeling to add two kitchens, it's probably going to increase your tap size, it's probably going to mean you're going to have to separate your irrigation tap from your domestic tap. Are you going to trigger fire sprinkling? You know, all of a sudden, you've got a $300,000 to $500,000 remodel to do that. I just don't see it generating. I don't see people really doing it a whole lot first off. I don't see it generating a lot of useful housing for us, but I also don't see it as a problem, and something that we need to sort of protect people from. Some of the really easy ones might be a two-story unit that's really easily set up to do a stacked situation. That might be a really great way of doing it. And then two couples can live together really effectively. That would be cool. I don't see a problem with that. So I'm in support of it, but also not in support of it because I think it's going to be this amazing outcome for us all. I just don't find a way of saying that it's against the comp plan, which is the criteria that we're kind of holding up. Other thoughts on three? John?
Well, I, not to recapitulate what has already been said, but I'll, I'm not in support of this for the same reasons that I, I didn't support number one, and that is, I think there's been an inadequate process associated with it. And I don't think it will accomplish what many desire for the same reasons you said. There's not many people who are going to do it, given the economics that you just described.
Yeah, I'll just say that, you know, again, the Park East area that I live in is pretty close to CU. And what I find is, since we don't allow duplexes, we end up with, you know, four bedroom bi-levels being rented out to large numbers of students that just move in. And then they, you know, it becomes effectively a duplex with a bunch of students in it. But gee, maybe if you allowed duplexes, you would end up with a different outcome. I do agree that we probably would like to know a little bit more about those outcomes. The Kaiser Marston's analysis does sort of point us to the fact that you're probably right, Brian. We probably won't see a lot of these happen because the numbers don't really justify it. A big giant 7,000 foot square house, a square foot house is going to be a lot more lucrative to a developer than a duplex or a triplex. So large, large homes was not accomplished. But, but I do support the flexibility of doing this, so I would vote for it.
Yeah, one more thing, kind of from that same perspective. I, I think the thing that this does do, so the additional ADU and the duplex, triplex possibility, is allow folks to have a place for their kids, their grown kids, to live on the same property. And that, that's a really big benefit. And that's one where I definitely have seen that happening a lot over the years in Boulder, going way back. And even to a lot of the older subdivisions like Wolf Lion did back in the Architractor's days. But, so I think there are people who would benefit from it, real people. So I, again, kind of support it. I don't think it's going to fix everything, but. Go ahead, repeat that.
I just, I just think of, having flexibility to me is always a good thing. And having options doesn't mean that you have to do things. That's why I say, you know, that's why we have will. So having the opportunity for somebody else to do it, if it applies to them, if they think it's a good idea, that it is in their benefit, that doesn't mean that all of us have to do it. There are so many things out there that, you know, if we all did it at once, we will destroy it, while we're already destroying the world anyways. But, you know, the point is that if we all did everything the same, yeah, of course, things will happen very badly, very quickly. But having flexibility for some people, if it works for them, I don't see, like I said, when I read these things initially, it seemed like a good idea. And then when I was listening to all of the people, then I'm thinking, maybe I'm missing some things. But, you know, there's different layers to those things. And there, there are many things that we need to work out. But certainly, flexibility is always a good thing. Understanding that it's not that just because the flexibility exists, that you have to do it. I just never bottomed onto that kind of mentality.
Harmon?
Did you need to say something before I speak? So I think the flexibility piece is one that is kind of a tough call for me, because our subdivision standards, our lot standards through subdivision are pretty restrictive. And so, you know, a lot of these bigger lots that have multiple potential development rights actually don't really subdivide very well, because we don't do flag lots, we don't do easements to get to the street. So you can't split a narrow deep lot very easily in Boulder. So, you know, I do think that when the time is right and the question is asked, you know, notions like being able to subdivide a house rather than subdivide the lot are going to make a lot of sense and properly presented to the community and talked about. I think it really might be a good plan. But, you know, another reason why it's tough to get fully behind the proposed changes is, you know, you've been allowed to make a detached ADU in the RE and the RR for like 35 years, and there are 34 detached ADUs, or just ADUs. I don't know if they're even detached. So, you know, I don't see the neighbors clamoring to do that. And maybe the people, you know, in Boulder who want their grandkids living on the lot with them or living in different zoning districts, I don't know. And, and so, you know, we heard this anecdote from one woman who said that she, she got a good deal on a house because she wasn't going to scrape it. And I think, you know, that, that story cut both ways for me, because it says that, you know, this is a neighborhood that has a lot less to fear than it thinks, because it's not allowing change. There are people who are selling to the people who they want to sell to. There's nobody who's allowing, you know, who's asking for ADUs. So, you know, I heard the word nothing burger a lot of times. I think it probably is. But, but the way I'm leaning in this is if it's such a nothing burger, then why scare the crap out of everybody for, for nothing, for no benefit? So that's where I'm standing.
Okay. Does that exhaust our need to talk about item three? Okay. Item four, which would be alternative ordinance to allow, you know, step up in terms of density, which would match the underlying land use in RE zones specifically. So it drops the lot size basically per unit from 15,000 to 7,500, right? Okay. Which is what, so if you had a 15,000 foot lot right now, you'd be able to have one house on it. If we don't do this, then you wouldn't be allowed to have an ADU. But if we do do this, then you could say, oh, we've got a 15,000 square foot lot, I can have my house and an ADU. Just one scenario. In support?
We have four.
I, I take the same attitude here. We have an inadequate process, and therefore I think it's inappropriate to move ahead with it.
Okay, fair. Yeah, item four. Any other comments on this one? Supportive, pro, con? Anecdotes, jokes?
Don't overdo it.
We try to avoid those.
Childhood trauma stories?
Brian?
I'm digging. Okay, then we can, I guess, talk about the next one. I'm generally in support of, you know, having the zoning land use, zoning designations, zone districts match the underlying land use zones. And that's why we make a lot of changes to zone districts and zoning maps around the city is to bring them in compliance with the underlying land use. So it's a, it's a protocol that we use for almost everything through the land use map change process and through the comp plan update process. So I don't see why we would not do this here, but that's my take on it.
Agreed. That's why I agree.
So this, and actually, this is something that would result in changes even without the two ADU thing because of what you just talked about. Someone with a 15,000 square foot lot could, could now have an ADU where they can't currently.
It would bring a few more lots into the corral of folks who could take advantage of this.
I just want to make a clarification. So AD, the ADU piece is separate from this. So an ADU is accessory to a single family home on a lot. So in this case, we're...
Is this the phase two? Is this the phase two question? Or is it really just?
This is probably more like a phase two option. It's what it's saying is, on a 15,000-square-foot lot in RE, you could convert a single-family home to a duplex.
Okay.
And that duplex would then not be able to have ADUs, because it's not a single-family detached. So just to provide that clarification.
Cool, thank you for correcting us on that. I was wandering off into the wrong direction.
However, your comments would still apply?
Yeah.
In terms of bringing things in compliance?
Yeah, I think it makes sense, I mean, just from that perspective.
Yeah.
On an ADU aside.
That's good enough for me.
And I mean, I'll just take this opportunity, this seems like as good a place as any to talk about the underlying densities in these zones. When we started this project, when we looked at compatible development long ago, before I was on the board, when we looked at middle-income housing strategies, when we looked at large lots, when it was sort of still the full thing, I think really the best kind of outcome that we could come to here from a lot of perspectives, the social capital perspective, the sustainability perspective, the creating housing of the varieties that people want perspective, is for this whole thing to have been pushed more in the direction of being a pocket neighborhood ordinance, and that there's a bunch of places around the country that have adopted successful pocket neighborhood ordinances, and that just allows you to have, if you've got a big enough lot, you could do a pocket neighborhood like Poplar Neighborhood. And for those of you who haven't been there, it's worth checking it out, and it's okay. You know, people who live near there don't experience a bad life, and the people who live in it love it. So to me, this particular question, I would almost want to have two criterias, you know, where you'd say, two criteria, you'd say, okay, the underlying zoning allows you to have, you know, six DU per acre, if you're doing a pocket neighborhood, then that's modified to fit a pattern book, pocket neighborhood design guideline that works to create excellent sustainable communities, and then you get that. And that would allow off-street parking and some other things too, that would fix some of the concerns that folks have. I think that's an excellent pattern to try to build into our code that's currently prohibited for no reason.
Yeah, and that really falls into the same kind of planning, thinking category as we proposed in the 2017 comp plan update, where we talked about a pilot neighborhood, and we were really targeting RL1 or RL2 for, you know, a neighborhood that would be willing to sacrifice its single-family monoculture for some, you know, little nodes of neighborhood commercial activity and multifamily. So, you know, a pair of major streets cross in a single-family neighborhood, and maybe the four lots on the four corners of those streets and the lots behind them could be consolidated in little garden apartments with coffee shops on the first floor could go in, and it would be delightful for the people to live in the neighborhood. You know, I think that, you know, those kinds of flexible planning concepts can be made very attractive to people, and I don't know if the people who live in the RE and RR will ever be interested in having a pocket neighborhood on a 90,000-square-foot lot in their neighborhood, but, you know, maybe that could become a community gathering place. Maybe that's the place where summertime, you know, movies get broad, you know, get projected against, you know, a white wall, and people sit out in the Central Common Green and have picnics together, and suddenly it's a, not just a neighborhood of giant lots where people, you know, might meet each other walking a dog, but it's actually a neighborhood where people have a weekly thing where they get together in a place. But we've got to think about ways that we can create those visions, rather than just shoehorning density into places.
100%. In fact, we're having a community movie on the green this Saturday night.
Love community movies on the green.
Looking forward to that.
Can I just clarify? So what Carl reminded us of, though, specifically with number four, is that it is tied to duplexes and triplexes, so that, I guess everybody, except for me, is on the other side. So it kind of obviates that one, right? Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, because it's like we were kind of...
I'm fine with it for duplexes and triplexes.
Dancing around a little bit.
But I'm still, like, going to probably keep lopping for pocket neighborhoods and multiple ADUs in a lot.
Very quick comment, because one thing that came across very strong and clear to me was the adversity for change. And I think that what we're proposing here is establishing some sort of first steps for the future, which sounds great, but I think that we have some work to do with our community to bring them along with us, because I think this is something that has not been part of their, I guess, of the suite of possibilities, and yet, they may be on board, once they feel that they are learning enough about them and they can feel a need to go part of that decision, and maybe they want to be part of that, but maybe they don't. But nonetheless, I think it was very clear to me that that wasn't part of the vision whatsoever. And so I think that there's work for us to do, to engage more people in that vision.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, we continue to struggle with the process of how do you bring 100,000 people all to a conclusion together? Yeah, we'll get there. That was a joke.
Yeah.
I heard like three moans and no laughs, and I was like, come on.
I was hysterically laughing inside, to quote Trupi Dog.
Let's go, we're not done for the night.
Totally. Okay, so the last question, number five, is deed restriction for permanent affordability on the additional units created by the duplex and triplex piece. I'll kick that one off. I think that's a terrible idea. I think the level of bureaucracy and complication that brings to things is a total mess, and I think that the report that we saw sort of proves that it doesn't make any sense, and there's no reason to think that by applying this rule, we would get affordable housing, we would just simply prevent stuff from happening. So if we want to prevent stuff from happening, let's just say no to the stuff from happening instead of using that as a way of further confusing the process. That's my thought.
So I'm just going to back you up and say, I skimmed the report when it was mentioned that it had come in, so that's all, an hour ago, and I spent a minute skimming it, and I saw that the affordable, with one affordable unit in a triplex, the project came in with a $400,000 figure in parentheses, so that tells me that without the city pumping in $400,000, it doesn't make any financial sense, so I agree with you.
In the affordable housing world, that's what you call your gap.
Yeah, big gap.
Big, big gap. And if we're going to spend 400 grand to create a duplex and an expensive house, an expensive neighborhood, we can spend that 400 grand to do a lot of other better things. David?
Yeah, I'd love to see the same analysis put to the ADU, affordable housing incentives that were put in kind of last minute this year, because I felt like those were just kind of, were put in without any sort of number crunching, and I thought those numbers were quite revealing. So I agree 100% with what you're saying. And in fact, if you don't, if you don't have an affordable unit, which, you know, private property owners who may be putting together an LLC to do a condo community of two people on their lot, you don't do their affordable housing thing, which seems very unlikely, they're going to pay inclusionary housing fees, which goes in to subsidize affordable housing in the city. That's part of our whole way that we move the needle. So that, so we should be thrilled and jumping up and down when we get that 30% or 20 to 30% that we get on a new dwelling unit.
Yeah, you're 100% right, because actually, we can take that money and leverage it and actually do something for it. So in this instance of getting a duplex and one of the units pays into IH.
Yeah, yeah.
We get something, and in the instance of us trying to make that homeowner do affordable unit, we basically create a $400,000 deficit in the whole same system. It doesn't make any sense at all. And I really am glad that the math was finally done, and we should do the math for the ADUs too, because it's actually the same math.
I think it is.
John?
Well, I remain open to the option of deed restriction, but given that we, again, a process issue, I haven't even had a chance to read that report yet, so I think it's inappropriate to move ahead with it until we've had a chance to think about it carefully.
Anybody else want to say any last things here? We basically are at a point where we are, there's no clear direction that we're heading in, so does someone want to make a motion or suggest a path forward?
I had a list of recommendations.
And I think maybe, I'm going to suggest, kind of regardless of where the chips fall, one way or the other, that instead of us trying to reiterate all of this in a summarized format for city staff, to tell council that we just take the record as it is and you guys communicate it, because it'll take us another hour to re-summarize what we just said, and I don't think it's necessary. It's also recorded, and it was on TV, and I'm sure all of city council is watching it right now.
I'd be glad to make a motion that...
Carl's working on the motion language here.
Oh, I see, okay.
All right. David probably has it up already.
Well, I was thinking of, I could make the staff recommended motion, but then I know it would fail, so I don't know if there's value to that.
That's fine.
Is that fine?
Yeah.
Because then we have a recommended motion. Okay, because, all right, so I move that Planning Board recommend approval of the draft ordinance found in Hatchman A and ordinance amending Title IX Land Use Code to conditionally allow one additional accessory dwelling unit per lot in the residential estate and residential rural zoning districts, and to conditionally allow the conversion of existing detached dwelling units into duplex or triplex units within the residential estate and residential rural zoning districts, consistent with the Boulder Valley Comp Plan goals and policies for increased housing diversity, affordability, and capacity, and the energy-efficient land use.
Okay, do we have a second for that motion?
Motion fails.
Yep.
All right, we're done.
Cool.
You want to say that in the record?
Yeah, the motion fails for lack of a second. Then, do we need to make another motion, or do we simply just not need to act on it? This is, I think this is...
Well, I mean, people could make motions about some of those other things that were discussed.
Sure, yeah. Let me get the answer from Hala before you guys all talk.
I think the code anticipates that you make a recommendation of some kind, so if you can come to one, that would be great.
Okay, great. Lupita, would you like to try to pull together some kind of motion here?
Well, I have a list of recommendations.
Is your mic on, Lupita?
Oh, no, yeah.
Sorry about that. So I did have a list of recommendations, and so maybe if I need to phrase it as a motion?
You could, you could put them out there too, if it's not phrased like a motion, or you could just try your best to make a motion.
You can pick some of it, yeah. Well, one is, three recommendations. One is to ask council to please focus on big houses and enact an ordinance that more directly deal or tackle this one problem, which I believe that's the original goal of this one.
And let me pause you in between the things, and we just do a straw poll on each one and see if people generally feel up or down. Does that seem like an okay way of proceeding with this?
Okay. Number two would be to work with the community involved to come with a plan that gets their buy-in, and so whatever we propose, the community really gets involved from the very beginning, and...
I think, so do that one again, is everybody sort of in favor? She's sort of, it's a pro-community engagement statement she's making?
Maybe just conduct additional community engagement.
With the repositioning of the project, I think that would make sense.
Right, from the beginning.
Generally? Okay.
And the last one is, we need to get all definitions, for example, the definitions on density cleared up so that all stakeholders understand them and agree on their meanings. I think that's very important.
Yeah, I think everyone agrees on that too, from the straw poll we did before. Does anyone feel like there's something missing from that set of recommendations?
I do, I feel like we could consider saying that there are, there are issues with Boulder Valley Comp Plan principles that got conflated with large homes, large lots, that should not be considered to be off the table in the future, given proper, given ways to deal with them properly, and potentially looking at ways for the entire, for it to be viewed as a citywide thing, rather than singling out a couple of zones for scrutiny. So I don't know how to, does that...
Yeah, I think that's an adequately phrased piece. Do you guys all feel good about that?
I would capture it, my suggestion would be to capture it differently, and we could use the language that's already up there. So, you know, to the extent that council wants to focus on increased housing diversity, affordability, and capacity, and energy-efficient land use, you know, we recommend that we engage in some, you know, planning processes to create, to generate some really creative ideas, to really augment our neighborhoods in ways that are delightful, like these pocket neighborhoods and little nodes within our single-family neighborhoods where the public can congregate and receive services and stuff.
Would that be something that, that it would not be restricted to one or two zone types?
Citywide.
We want citywide, I think that would be a critical piece.
More like a neighborhood enhancement program that includes a lot of different elements.
That way it's not targeting any one.
I think that's meritorious, but I think it's unnecessary and superfluous. I mean, everyone knows the comp plan is there, and that is what we should be using to move ahead with these, all of these issues that you just mentioned. We don't need to say it.
The comp plan is so broad and has everything in it, that using that as our backstop is as good as using nothing. It's so broad and says so many things that if we keep using it as we have that, it's cover for not doing anything. So we need to start bringing the comp plan ideas into reality, into concepts, otherwise we're going to fake ourselves into believing that we are good and we have a comp plan, because it's too big, it's too broad and has too many, it's overlapping, it's contradictory. So I think it's okay for us to tie some things back down to earth.
And we have been asked to help inform Phase Two, which is already sort of a work plan item, that they've already set in motion, so this is, there is actually an effort that's happening, that's been pushed forward by city council. The next city council will have a chance to, you know, think about it, reconsider it, but in terms of giving them feedback, I think it's appropriate for us to say something like that.
Yeah, and in fact, we could even include a reference to Phase Two. The Planning Board's opinion does not mean to imply that there should not be a Phase Two, that could try to get it right the next time and to do, and to do it in a way that makes, that makes more sense, and maybe it isn't large homes, large lots anymore, maybe it's something...
Something different.
Something more appropriate to really communicate to the public and to get the public's input on what we're really trying to do, if we're trying to do more than just the large homes and large lots business.
Right. I think it's important to bring the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan to a concrete picture for people, because it's just so nebulous and so high-level, and most people haven't read it. In fact, I brought the book with me today, because I thought some people, I'm sure, haven't even read it, and there are some pieces that sometimes may seem like they contradict each other, but in reality, if you understand the spirit, some things don't go with it, and some things clearly go with it. And the way that you're going to make it happen is when you say, you know, the spirit's this, and this can be played into there if you really want to, but that's really not the spirit. That's why we're really going to show our values, I think. And I like to think that our city is going to get it right.
Well, I won't oppose it, I just think it's unnecessary, but...
Cool, appreciate that.
We have a four-part motion that's brewing?
Yep. So we do not have concrete motion language unless one of you guys has been typing that as we go.
You want to try it again, Lupita?
I got the first one. Well, oh.
You can say I...
You can make the motion and...
I move that Planning Board recommend to, I move that Planning Board recommend to city council the following, and then you can go through your...
Oh, goodness. I'm on the spot, I'm not...
You're doing great. You're leading the way, this is really advanced stuff, it's great.
Right. Okay, I make a motion that the Planning Board, we recommend to city council that we focus on big houses and enacted ordinance that more directly tackle or deal with this, the problem of big houses, that we work with the community involved to come with a plan that gets their buy-in from the beginning, and then we get all our definitions and language cleared up so that all stakeholders understand the meaning. And the last one has to do with bringing the...
You want me to try?
Yes.
If you want to. And so, and further, the Planning Board still recommends that staff engage in Phase Two planning, aimed at creating more consistency with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan goals and policies for increased housing diversity, affordability, and capacity, and the energy-efficient land use through attractive and creative options such as exploring pocket neighborhoods and small neighborhood-serving commercial nodes, as already provided in the Comprehensive Plan.
Beautiful motion, you guys. I'm going to second Lupita's motion.
Was the term, did we capture the fact that we wanted to look at it, how it applies citywide, captured in there? it applies citywide, captured in there?
Ah, citywide.
Yeah, so--
Did you say citywide?
I didn't, but we can easily just put that somewhere in there.
And he's nodding at us.
Citywide.
Across zones.
Okay, this is--
I want my zone to be a pick.
Cool. I am going to be incapable of repeating that motion, so I'm just, it's the motion for the board, moved by Montoya and seconded by Bowen. Does anyone want to speak to the motion? I think we probably have, unless you want to. Okay. Okay, so it's the board's motion now. Anyone else want to speak to it, or can we call, call a question? We good? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously recommend to City Council to do some stuff. Okay, I think that brings us to the end of the first part of our agenda. And we're going to really, like, taxi open, the transportation staff. So let's give ourselves like a, you know, a five-minute break in the turnover time for staff to, you know, relaptop and all the things they got to do. And thanks to those of you from the public who came and sat through that whole shebang, that was pretty awesome.
Yeah, thank you for your patience.
Yeah. Okay, we're back. At least some of us are back. What? No? The mics are on. All right. Okay, now we're going. We're mostly going.
She didn't bring her key card, she'll be knocking on the door.
Yeah, it's true.
I didn't see she wasn't here.
Okay. Well, I think we can ease on into it before Lupita gets back. If you guys would like to start off, well--
Yes, please.
So our last, forgetting what I'm doing here, our last, yeah, no, our last public hearing at the end of the night is for you, the TMP and Recommendation to City Council, which we saw just recently. Someone should rescue Lupita, I think she's stuck out there. And we're going to start off by a, with a presentation by staff, and then questions from Planning Board to staff, and then public comment. Please sign up if you'd like to say something. And then deliberations. Oh? Oh, sorry, we haven't met before. You're the last one we've met, apparently.
You say someone before you beat them.
Exactly.
You're the last one.
The last one. All right. Take it away.
Ready to go?
Ready to go.
Hey, Kathleen King from Comprehensive Planning, I'm here with Randall Rutch from Transportation, and thank you for having us tonight. We're looking forward to presenting and putting your input on the draft 2019 Transportation Master Plan. We will do staff presentation as you mentioned, we'll talk about some of the key issues, and then there's time for the public hearing and, or discussion and action. So I know the open space master plan was recently here, but just to remind everyone about Planning Board's role in department master plans and master plan approval, the City Plans and Projects Handbook is the city's guiding document for procedure of approval for department master plans and the capital program. This handbook identifies that the review by Planning Board should include an evaluation of whether the plan is consistent with the goals and policies of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, an understanding of how the department intends to meet its service standards, and a description of the capital needs and funding sources. So these are the, the issues that are really the focus of your work tonight, and I believe you know what the Recommendation to Council is largely based on. So I will turn it over to Randall now, talk about the plan.
Yeah, Randall Rutch, Senior Transportation Planner. Evening. And we'll just give you a sense of where we are. We're coming up to the end of the process. We've been at this for about 18 months, and so we're certainly excited to be in front of you, and then heading to City Council on September 17th, per the current schedule. So this just gives you a sense of what we've been up to recently and where we are going. We were actually at the Environmental Advisory Board yesterday. We were at the farmer's market yesterday as well, got rained, but we're displaying the plan and handing out cards to direct people to where it is on the website and Be Heard Boulder questionnaires. Obviously, we're here tonight. We have a final workshop with our Transportation Advisory Board on Monday, just to get them fully comfortable with the action plan and the investment programs, and then going to the Transportation Advisory Board on the 9th, and as I said, Council on the 17th. So we've continued to do engagement activities, as you would expect, including yesterday at the farmer's market. Throughout the planning process, we've spoken to a variety of community groups. We've been doing probably two or three presentations a week for the last couple of months. We also have been using Be Heard Boulder extensively. We've had a question of the month on Be Heard Boulder, and I just happened to take a look at our summary engagement relative to that, and we've had over 7,000 people look at various questions over the time that the plan has, has been up. We've had over 900 responses, we've had over 2,000 people that are considered informed in that they've spent time on the site actually reading the material. So we also have a summary of our public process on the web. We didn't provide that material to you, but we've been keeping a running summary just to assure you that we've been doing a lot of outreach and that the plan is based on that. So we really went through the majority of the work that's been done on the plan when we were here July 25th, so wanted to remind you of the five focused areas that we talked about, but then we've, we've shifted in, in how we're presenting those in the draft document, but we'll just highlight a few of the things we talked about last time. So the real work areas in the plan are listed here. Vision Zero, or safety, has certainly been a major emphasis throughout the process. Making walking and biking comfortable has been an emphasis with the low-stress network work, as well as the pedestrian plan. We know that transit is key in terms of meeting our, both our transportation and greenhouse gas goals. We know advanced mobility is coming, so we have policies in the plan related to that. And then greenhouse gas reduction is a theme that runs throughout. So we looked at this map last time, this is the renewed vision for transit. This is really about implementing that in this plan. We know RTD is cutting service, so we need to take more of that on ourselves, and the plan and the investment program and the actions reflect that. We also, as part of the focus on the pedestrian, we rerun, reran, I guess, the tool that we developed in the 14 Plan, the Neighborhood Access Tool, and one of the big improvements this year was that we actually surveyed the community and asked them, what's important to you to walk to? The last time it had been primarily a staff effort that did that, but now we have destinations based on community responses of where they would like to be able to walk, as part of their, to meet their daily needs within their neighborhood. And then low stress, we've developed the Low Stress Network for both pedestrians and bikes, and so the idea here is really making it comfortable for all people to be able to travel. And then as part of that, we've identified pedestrian improvement areas. So there are 13 of those where there are currently destinations, but improvements can be made to make that low-stress walking possible, so really leveraging the destinations that are already there with the kinds of transportation improvements we can do. And the Low Stress Bike Network is then the companion to that. You saw this map last time, and that's really talking about a range of facilities from the Neighborhood Green Street, which is very low volume, almost a shared street kind of space where anyone can feel comfortable with some additional signage and markings on the street. If you've been in the downtown area, you might have seen a lot of white and green paint that's shown up on 13th Street, and that is our first demonstration of what a Neighborhood Green Street looks like, and there will be a dedication of that facility in early September, so something to look forward to. And then those, Low Stress Network goes all the way up to a fully protected, grade-separated lane, and then the off-street multi-use path. So again, the idea is anyone can feel comfortable walking or biking on these facilities.
So let me, let me just ask a quick question on that, not to set the precedent of us slowing down your presentation, but I'm assuming that these are, it's a plan for the future, right?
Well--
It's not a documentation of what things are there now?
Well, there would be additions, so I mean, so in many cases, particularly the Neighborhood Green Streets are streets that have been designated bike routes in the past, but what this plan says we would do is add additional paint and signage and potentially some intersection improvements to make those streets even safer than they would be perceived today.
Okay. I'm just looking at a few that I ride pretty regularly, and like Highway 36 is terrifying and does not have a vertical separation, but it's marked red, so when's that going to happen? Broadway has vertical separation shown on it. J.
Yes.
Like, none of those actually exist. I know the 13th Project is cool, but like, you can't hang your head on the whole thing there.
And you're making a great observation in that there's a wide range of the kinds of improvements that would need to be done. So obviously, the paint and signs are relatively cheap, something that requires a lot, a lot of physical separation, like US 36 or some of the other major arterials. We will look at those as part of corridor studies and determine what the best improvement is, and then that would be a major investment to make those, to make those improvements. And so we've, we've costed those out, we know what it looks like. I will just say, one of those improvements as a single project is the most expensive single project that we have in the plan. So, yeah, the costs are significant.
Right. I mean, honestly, looking, sorry, going back to that one again. North Broadway is identified as a vertical separation section of street, and that's not part of the project that you're doing right now?
Well, we are doing a--
For part of it.
--separation for part of it.
Yeah, but not for the part that's all marked red for the full length of where it's marked red?
Yeah, so we clearly have more work to do, and that's, that's what the plan is about, is setting that expectation so that when we go there, we will try to do that work.
Cool. I just think it should be really, really, really clear that this is not a documentation of how well we've done, or that we've completed all these things.
Oh, no, no, this is a proposal.
Yeah.
Yes.
Could I, could I ask a question with regards to the criteria that you use in terms of priorities? You know, when you're selecting the projects to work on, is it the priorities, for example, how many people will be affected by this change? Or the level of danger of, you know, what you're trying to resolve? What are the criteria that you use to determine which ones should be addressed first?
So there's a prioritization process that is going on for every project in the TMP, and then a sub-process that is going on for the Low Stress Network, or has gone on, and so they have used things like population and employment density, accidents, transit, ridership, that kind of thing. So looking at really how people would be affected in those areas. Yeah, and we'll talk a little more about the overall prioritization, just to give you a peek under the hood of how we've done that.
Aye.
That's toward the end of the presentation.
And just to, Brian's coming, so I noticed that we're using that separation or whatever, but the term protected bike lanes was used in the past. Did we kind of move away from using protected bike lanes?
Well, so we're using protected buffer.
Protected buffer, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So Folsom Street would be an example of protected and buffered.
Yeah, I think a buffered is, you know, having that kind of, you know, distance, but protected meaning you actually have physical separation, right?
Well, it's, it's all--
Well, it's all levels, right? So perception, I mean, space is protection, vertical separation is protection, having bollards, something in the way, you know, whether it's the bumper blocks or the raised bollards like we have on Folsom Street. I mean, it's all different levels of protection.
Okay.
Some more effective, some more perceptual, some both, right?
Yeah, and with, just one last thing on pavement markings and things, you know, pavement markings and cues for bikes. You did reference the NACTO standards in the, one of the appendices on mobility options, but I didn't see them really referenced in terms of informing our way of approaching things like the Green Street. I just wondered if we are using NACTO for that as well, and yeah.
Yes.
I don't know if there's a-
Yeah, there's both NACTO and one other set of standards that were used as part of it, and I don't remember what was the second one, but DK could certainly give you more of that background.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've rolled both of those together, used it in the evaluation and developing the set of facilities.
Okay.
Anything else on this? I know it's a great map, but-
Yeah, thank you for tolerating us.
That's fine. That's why we're here.
You.
And then we also looked at this map last time because, as we said, transit is both critical to success of the plan, and then we know that we have more people traveling in, a majority of our employees travel in today, and that will increase in the future. And so really building on the work that was done as part of the Northwest Area Mobility Study, and then the corridor studies that have been happening recently. And so if you've been reading the paper, you know that RTD has led the study on 119, and Boulder County has led the study on Highway 7 all the way out to Brighton. And as I think we talked about last time, you know, the model for those is really the improvements that went in on US 36, where you've got a managed lane, you've got the bus rapid transit, and you've got the commuter-bike way off the facility, so again, providing that safe facility for anyone to ride.
Yeah, can I just inquire what sort of assumptions you're making about RTD's ability to provide a certain level of service in this?
We're making the assumption that they are not able and not willing to provide the service that the plan calls for, and so as part of the planning process, we've done something called the Transit Service Delivery Study. That was presented to council in June. I think there were nine different approaches to managing and funding transit, and there were a couple of A and Bs in there as well. Council said, "Go ahead and investigate four of those," and so what we see is that over time, one way or another, we will be building our local transit service. That might be along the HOP model, which the city currently manages in contracts with VIA, or there are other ways to do that. So that will become more of our responsibility because we don't see RTD meeting the needs.
So just to, is this all being done in coordination with the county and the Northwest Area Mobility Study?
Well, certainly, the two quarter, the two-quarter studies that have been done, the county's been a very active participant, has led the one on State Highway 7, and then one of the options, you know, that is being explored is potentially something like a county transit agency, because the county also has an interest in more transit than RTD is willing or able to provide, so.
So we're working closely with the county?
Yes. Yep, and Gene has been project manager and representative on both of those.
So Gene Sanson, Transportation Staff, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to add on to what Randall was saying to your question, Mr. Gersell, about county participation. So we had both elected and staff county participation in the Transit Service Delivery Study, so they were very much a part of all of the work that we did to make these recommendations, and we continue to work with them.
Thank you.
Okay, and so then you've had the draft plan, and hopefully have had a chance to look at it, but one of the things that we did as part of the process is we also really took a look at how to best present the content of the plan, how to make it more legible, more approachable, hopefully easier to find things, and we benefited from having a number of new staff that had to read the old plan fresh, and then had great ideas in terms of this plan, as well as some consultants that we worked with. And so the plan really has these three major areas that are highlighted in the colored numbers there. So basically, the background and, you know, public process and what's new is in that first section, number one, and then the real meat of the plan, or heart of the plan, is the key initiatives. So 10 key initiatives, and they're all structured in a consistent way. So we've said, you know, what's important, and then what are the key challenges, and then what are we gonna do about it? And so in the plan is a, highlights of the actions that we say we're gonna take. Also, there is a action plan document that is largely a staff-based document, but it really lays out what we see as our work program for the next five years, and we did that with the last plan. It's about 29 pages currently, and so every year, when we look at what we need to do for the year, that's the document we reference, and it has a lot of detail in terms of how we make these 10 initiatives real. And then the plan has vision and goals, and actually, the, you know, we've had the vision for quite a while, and one of our TAB members came up with the nice, pithy statements of "Be safe, be equitable, et cetera," and again, trying to make it accessible and understandable. That seemed like a great way to present a much longer set of ideas that we had written, so we have to give him credit for that.
Should I interpret your use of the word equitable as your code for affordable?
Well, affordability is certainly part of it. And then also thinking about things like the unbanked and people that may not have access to the technology, like smartphones, that a lot of us assume, so there's a variety of factors.
Great.
And then there's two pages in the plan with 22 policies in total that closely reflect the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, and so that really gives the policy position of what we're trying to do in the plan. I've just put the headings really for those here, and I know you've had a chance to look at them, so I won't go through them. Other than it seemed important that other transportation policies, not so self-explanatory, but we talk about air quality, greenhouse gas reduction there, there's a policy related to the airport because transportation actually manages the airport, though that tends to be fairly standalone, and then following the 13 floods, emergency response, how we prepare for things like that in the future. So key initiatives, again, not gonna go through these. I think a lot of them are fairly self-explanatory. We can talk about any questions that you have, but there are 10. First five are listed here, second five here. I think they're, again, fairly self-explanatory. And just want to highlight, we'll talk a little more about funding, but, you know, one of the major themes that we have, both from the work of the plan as well as looking forward, is that we're very limited in what we can do right now. We've seen a lot of increase in costs in terms of what we're able to do, and if we're gonna accomplish what we've set out by 2030, additional funding is definitely a big part of that.
Question. The pedestrian plan is really a pretty major deliverable. Would that be a companion document that will be, that will live with the master plan?
Yeah, so it's currently out for public review as well.
Okay.
So you can find that on the website, but we have always taken the modal plans and rolled those up into the master plan, and then the master plan is what the boards and council really take a look at.
Okay, so it's kind of on its separate approval process? It's not gonna be released necessarily with the master plan, but?
No, well, it's out there for review right now, so it is released.
Yeah, 'cause I saw it in the package.
Yeah, and it was developed, there's been a pedestrian advisory committee, about 25 folks that have worked very hard on that and been very involved, and so it's a good effort. Would encourage you to take a look at it. So then when we talk about investment programs, you know, we really have, well, I guess I should move forward in my slide, I'm jumping ahead here. So when we talk about investment programs, then these are really the themes that run throughout, so as you might expect, given what we've highlighted, you know, safety is a big issue, trying to maintain essential services is a really big issue because of what we've seen in terms of cost increase. Safe and comfortable for all ages, that's the low-stress in the pedestrian plan. Transit is key, both local and regional, and then throughout the plan, you know, we are matching the city's commitment for 50% reduction in greenhouse gas by 2030, so that's a theme throughout as well. And then we have some principles in the plan. Again, I've summarized what's actually there, but, you know, as reflecting everything else, operating and maintaining a safe system is number one. Maintenance operations, big need innovations, we're addressing that as part of the advanced mobility strategically enhanced, so we want to complete the various systems, including adding to the transit system. And then we do a lot of that through corridor studies, and then we work very hard to leverage our funds. And so over the years, we've been successful in funding a lot of our capital investment program through outside funds, where we leverage a city dollar with two to four typically federal dollars, and we will continue to try to do that. So we have three investment programs. This is something that I think was the 2003 Transportation Plan established, and it's been adopted citywide. So current funding is, just as you would expect, we have, in this case, a forecast through 2030 of the revenues that we expect to get, and so current funding will match that forecast, so reasonably expected revenues. We've determined how we would allocate that over the life of the plan. Then in the past, we've had an action plan, we're now calling it strategic, so it's meant to reflect that, you know, the climate crisis is more pressing, we need to be working harder, we've got a shorter timeframe, so it's now strategic, which is maybe more significant than action, at least that's the intent. And then vision is, you know, what would be if we were able to accomplish everything, all grown up, a very big number attached to that. And just to give you a visual sense of what those look like, so current funding is about $39 million a year, that would be the average over the 11 years of the plan. The next, the dark green there is part of the plan, and for material that went to council a couple of months ago, we did a essential unmet needs analysis, and that comes out to about $23 million of needed annual investment to maintain the system we have. So that would do things like improve our pavement condition, it would restore transit service cuts that we've seen from RTD over the last number of years, it would increase some of our capital investment, et cetera. So that would be, that's kind of the first chunk, but it's part of the strategic investment program, and then we'll talk a little more about that. And then, as I said, the vision is everything that we would do if money was no object. So in terms of current funding, then, you know, some of the things we're working with that I've already mentioned, basically revenue is flat, uncertain, state and federal funding. So when we look at that $23 million of critical unmet needs, that is something that we're, we feel like we're gonna have to solve ourselves. That's not the type of thing that federal or state money is gonna come in and fix for us. And I've mentioned significant cost increases. You might remember from the last time we were here, a project in 2012 was $10 million, in 2018 it was 14 and a half. Today it would certainly be 15. So we've seen that kind of 50% increase in cost, and anyone with a budget knows what that does in terms of what you can accomplish. So in terms of the emphasis, essential services, very big, Vision Zero, pedestrian, again, trying to implement the low-stress green streets, maintain transit. We want to do some of the things that have been planned for the HOP service to make that into four legs, more direct, and then city improvements on to the community transit network routes. And a new element to the plan reflecting the climate crisis is we're gonna work very hard on electrifying the transit fleet, and so we're putting a fair amount of funding into that and all the programs. Strategic then adds to the current funding, so this would be an addition. I've already mentioned the $23 million, and you can read the kinds of things that would go be part of that, I mentioned some of them. And then as part of that needs assessment, there was also $21 million of one-time capital cost identified, and so that would allow us to electrify the whole HOP fleet, and that would allow us to run fiber to all of our traffic signals, which is something that needs to be done, both to manage those effectively and to prepare for communications that you would need with advanced mobility, so it will have a future function as well. And then, you know, we're gonna do all of the pedestrian improvement areas, we're gonna fully implement the renewed vision for transit, and that includes both service and vehicle, mobility hubs, we're gonna electrify the transit fleet, and then we're gonna work on implementation of the regional corridors, starting with State Highway 119. A lot of that money will come elsewhere, but we need to have local funds to match that, and then there's about $12.7 million specifically allocated to other greenhouse gas reduction strategies, and that's a set of packages that were developed by our climate commitment staff, so we want to include that. And then I just wanted to give you a map vision of, you know, the full, if we built everything that is in the plan, probably a little hard to see, but we have about 1,200 projects in the plan that are demonstrated in the first map, and then the complete transit system is in the smaller second map, and you can see that that's both internal and external. So the transit is addressing that regional travel as well as internal travel. And then the question is, how do you get to do that? Well, there was a funding working group, and I don't think we looked at this last time, but if we did, tell me.
We did.
Yes, we did, okay, so I won't bother to go through it, but, you know, they looked at a variety of funding mechanisms, narrowed it to six. Council said, "Continue to explore these." The mobility fee or transportation utility fee is probably the one that would help address that $23 million local need, and then potentially something like the county-wide transportation tax might address the transit need. So there's a way to start threading our way, you know, through some of these daunting numbers in terms of the investment programs. And then just to give you, I promised a little look under the hood in terms of how we prioritize our projects, and so as far as this effort, you know, we have this strategy of continuous improvement, and every update, we try to get better at what we do. 2003, we put everything into GIS. In 14, we developed a comprehensive costing database that costs every project, and so we've updated that costing database as part of this, and then we've also developed a tool to help us prioritize projects. And so we have three flag factors, and those are things like floodplains and wetlands and neighborhood access that give us a sense of potential complexity that would occur relative to a given project, and then we've got the six factors listed there that are used in the prioritization model. And so population, employment, affordable housing, transit ridership density, mobility hubs, and equity. And so we see this as a tool. It doesn't really give you a right answer, but it helps us to be able to sort and prioritize, and we will use this as part of every CIP process and every budget process, so it helps us take those 1,200 projects to some smaller set, depending on the needs at the time. And I think I kind of mentioned a lot of this. This is just a, this is a roll-up map. The darker the blue is the higher priority of the project. So there are 1,200 projects included here. You can see where, you know, if you just kind of squint and look at the general colors, you get a sense of where, you know, where the high-priority projects land, and it's fairly intuitive. It lands in places where there are a lot of, you know, high population, high employment, affordable housing. There's a big chunk of projects just west of, or just east of 28th Street around Golden West, if you're familiar with that facility, a lot of affordable housing, a lot of elderly, car-free, disabled, so the things that come out of the equity side of the model, so that, you know, again, makes sense in terms of what you would hope to see. So again, it's a tool, and it's something that we will continue to use. So clearly, we are in the decision phase. We're here hoping for a recommendation from you relative to the plan, and then just wanted to remind that, remind you that we do have measurable objectives as part of the plan, so we try to monitor what we do. We produce a transportation report on progress every two years. The last one from 18 is a- The last one from 18 is available on our website. If you want to take a look at what that looks like, and we evaluate against all our measurable objectives, try to say what we need to do better on that basis. So with that, turn it back to Kathleen.
Sure. Are there questions on kind of the content of that before I go back into the key issues?
Yeah, we could do questions. Does anyone have any that we didn't exhaust already?
Actually, there's one question I had. Last time, you showed us a really cool graph that I think showed, there's VMT per capita graph that shows we've made progress on that, which I think is really cool. But last time, you showed us a, I think, an overall VMT that showed that over like the last 20 years or so, it had stayed flat. And I guess that isn't in the master plan. Is that in your slide deck? Or I just really wanted a copy of that, but...
Oh, well, we could certainly get you a copy. It's not in this presentation, but...
Yeah, but I'm not remembering wrong, right?
No, no.
You did present that.
Because VMT is one of the things we measure.
Yeah.
As part of what we're trying to accomplish. And you're right, we saw growth from '96. We saw a growth, then we saw a drop.
Right.
A bit before, a bit below 1994 levels. And then we've seen it start to increase. So that is one of the challenges that we have, both that it's increasing. And then we have a, another VMT goal of 1.9 million that we say we're shooting for now as part of our, you know, reducing our greenhouse gas and other pollutants.
Okay. Well, I'll show you an email. I'd just like to get a copy of that.
Yeah.
I think it kind of shows us that traffic hasn't gotten overall as cataclysmically worse, as your perception is.
Yeah, and that graph is actually in the 18 Transportation Report on Progress.
Oh, is it?
On the website.
Oh, I can find it there.
Happy to provide it, or you can find it there.
I'll look for it. Thanks.
So how would you, actually, that was really one of the most interesting things about the July 25 presentation was to see that we have fewer VMT, measurable VMT in the city now.
Well, had for a while. Now we're doing that.
Well, we have fewer VMT in the city now than we did in 2003, when the peak on the graph, I believe, showed 2001, something like that. It actually went down for a while, and it's only barely creeping up now. So how do you square that with, you know, all the conversation that we're hearing about this crisis of incommutership that we have? And all the old heads talking about how the traffic is so much worse than it was 10 years ago when I moved here?
Yeah, well, so, so traffic is always worse, you know, after you've moved here, right?
Right, right.
So there's both perception and reality. And, I mean, part of it is that congestion is nonlinear, I mean, from a transportation planning or engineering perspective. So it takes relatively few cars to make it feel significantly worse. And then another factor that I think is quite interesting is that SUVs actually occupy, effectively occupy more space, more space than a sedan. And there's a professor out of University of Pennsylvania, I'm going to say five, 10 years ago, did a study. And because of the bigger bulk, the visibility, the slower acceleration, the longer braking distance, he calculated an SUV takes 15 to 20% more space than a standard sedan. So if you know what's happened in terms of buying trends and what you see on the road, right, I mean, that's part of it. Whether that's certainly not all of it, but there, you know, but we all feel that. I mean, I'm in a sedan, and when I'm surrounded by a bunch of Suburbans, I feel really tiny. Yeah.
So it's the SUV trend, and also it's the kind of traffic that we're getting? So it's more concentrated in certain times of day or, because, you know, with 62,000 incommuters, you'd think that it would be hard to overcome that huge number that we keep hearing.
So we're probably seeing more of a peak because of the increase in employment? You know, because the majority of people, they try to go home between 5:00 and 5:30. And if you look at our peaks, I mean, they're relatively compressed relative to a lot of places in the country, but they certainly are there, and they are getting bigger. They're getting a little wider as people change their pattern. I mean, you know, there are people in our office that stay an extra half hour because they know they can get a half hour of work, and they can save a half hour on the drive.
Right.
Yeah.
Because I'm an LA person. That's where I learned how to drive, and actually, my favorite place to drive in. One of the things that you can look at is the metric that you're using. So if the commuter time goes from one hour to an hour and 20 minutes, then you can kind of see there is, in fact, some changes. I think it's the metric that you use to make the comparisons, because maybe the numbers may not have increased, and, you know, to say even the size of the vehicles, which I'm surprised that this place has a lot of SUVs.
Yeah, and toward the front of the plan where we have some of the statistics and the infographics, there is travel time.
Okay.
There, and it's gone up X number of minutes, a few. I mean, not a lot, but it has gone up. And then one of the things that we're doing in terms of our measurable objectives is we're moving away from the traditional level of service and starting to talk more about travel time and travel time for all modes.
Yeah, and the distance, I think there will be another good metric. How far are people having to drive now to be able to go to work?
Right. Yeah, and we capture that in our surveys, and we know that average travel distance is going up. Yeah.
I can never resist in pointing about congestion.
John, your mic.
Yeah, I was wondering about congestion pricing. That was identified as one potential source of funds. And I never get a, I'd be interested to know how realistic or effective that might be, both in terms of raising funds and altering traffic patterns.
Well, it is certainly very effective. It's done, you know, it's been done in London, I think, for about 15 years at this point. And, you know, you could very easily find a number of news reports and studies on the web that would talk about that. I don't necessarily have all those numbers, but, you know, significant reduction in traffic, significant improvement in air quality, significant increase in walking and biking in central London as a result of their congestion charge. You know, other European cities are doing that. Cities are going car-free in their centers across Europe. Cities are also going to clean vehicle zones. So, you know, there's a whole range of things that people are doing out there. But we know it works. And we know that as, you know, as we provide options, I mean, to some extent, we already have that in terms of the hot lane on US 36, right? Because you can buy into that as a single occupant vehicle. So we see that kind of facility, again, happening on the other corridors as we make those improvements. People have a choice, then you can start charging because you've given people a choice, and they can make that decision.
Cool. Thanks for indulging on our questions. I wonder if we should jump into the key issues here? What do you guys think?
I've got a quick question.
Sure.
You mentioned electrifying the fleet, and that becomes the quality of life of those who work on Pearl Street, on West Pearl, for example. The, it's funny that the climate concerns can sometimes be trumped by just the sound of the bus, particularly as it heads south on 11th and makes its turn west on Pearl, especially if you happen to be sitting at Salt. You can't hear anything because of the bus, the sound. But what's worse is they're empty. And I know a handful of people who, it's a game, they count the number of people in the buses that go by Salt and the kitchen and Jack's. And it's one to zero people reliably. And they've been counting for a long time, and I've been sitting with them, as they've been doing it for years. So it would seem that electrification, yes, but what if smaller capacity vehicles that are electric, that are less expensive to purchase? That if these vehicles really are, these very expensive buses really are empty, and I do sit and watch them as well, and they are. And I ride the bus a lot, and oftentimes, I'm alone on the bus. And it's kind of cool to have my own private limo that's that big, but it feels really wasteful. So as we shift away from the, as we move into electric, what conversations are being had about smaller-capacity electric vehicles?
Well, we certainly have, I mean, the plan talks about piloting micro-mobility, which is very small. I mean, you know, typically four-to-six-passenger kind of vehicle. So we're interested in that. But then relative to the hop, I mean, when the hop actually started, it was a significantly smaller vehicle than it is today. And larger vehicles were purchased because there are portions of the route when the bus is full.
I'm sure there are portions.
Clearly not seeing that portion.
Yeah.
But so we, so we started the hop with small vehicles. We found that we had to buy larger vehicles to actually accommodate the ridership. Doesn't mean it's all the time. It doesn't mean it's every spot on the route, but there are times when there are a lot of people on that bus.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see it come together.
But we're looking at the whole range. So the micro-mobility is definitely something that we intend to pilot.
Just because I love talking about transit.
Sure you do.
Bringing up such a good question that comes up quite a bit about the size of buses. And really, the biggest cost is the drivers. So you don't really see much of a cost savings with a smaller vehicle. It's really about the drivers, and it's more cost-effective to have that large vehicle when you have.
When you need it.
That capacity need.
That's a good point.
So it is, yeah, it's not an easy, yeah.
Well, I'll bring that up as a rebuttal. These are some crusty old folk, and they love counting than people on the bus. I'll say, it's not the people, it's the cost of the driver.
The other thing that, one of the projects that's coming up is a redesign of the hop route. So it's something that we've been working on for the past, I'd say, two-plus years now. And now that we have some funds to purchase electric vehicles, and we have some, actually, Dr. Cog's subregional transportation improvement program funds to actually start operating the hop a little bit differently than we do today, kind of segmenting it so that we're using our resources in the most productive areas of that route. So there's more work to do on that, but we're working to make that the most efficient system we can.
Awesome. If you're looking at electric vehicles, maybe there would be significant cost savings for something smaller than versus larger. I'm not really sure.
Yeah, we're doing a lot of research with, you know, looking into electric vehicles at the moment, so.
Plus achieving the carbon goals.
Right, right. Thanks.
Okay, I'll go into the analysis of the key issues. The first is to confirm that the transportation master plan is consistent with the goals of the comp plan. So there's a pretty detailed breakdown of this issue in the packet memo. So I'm just going to touch on three key areas of policy that the TNP really aligns with and strives to, I think, implement. The first is the BVCP's policies on the built environment. Some of the key initiatives that support BBC policies, such as the commitment to a walkable and accessible city, and improving the mobility grid and connections can be achieved through some of the TNP's key initiatives, such as the commitment to building and maintaining a low-stress walk and bike network, as well as the updated pedestrian plan, which includes pedestrian improvement areas and the Neighborhood Green Streets program. Policies in Section 4 of the BBC, BVCP, which focus on energy, climate, and waste, related to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and providing clean mobility options are considered with a lot of initiatives in the TNP, including providing mobility options for residents and commuters, as well as shaping innovation and new forms of mobility. And then obviously, Section 6, which handles a lot of our direct transportation policies, align with the transportation master plan and actually reference that plan directly. In our staff's analysis, we didn't find any initiatives of the transportation master plan that are in conflict with policies of the comprehensive plan. So the next key issue surrounds the department's service standards. The service standards for all department master plans are broken into these four categories. So I'll talk a little bit about each of them. The first is being responsive to public objectives. And the comp plan identifies the transportation master plan actually as that tool for identifying and implementing the public's objectives. So we have direct alignment here. The second is sufficiency of financing. So the 2019 TNP is consistent with an approach to maintain, diversify, and acquire new funding sources. And Randall's going to talk a little bit more about that in a moment. The third service standard is about operational effectiveness. So here, the comp plan, again, references the TNP directly to guide the maintenance and operation of our transportation system. And then finally, the location and adequacy of equipment and facilities. So for transportation, this service standard is really related to development and redevelopment projects, which require that right-of-way is dedicated and transportation facilities are provided through development review. So there was a street classification map that was passed out, so you should all have a copy of that. This identifies where the city's design and construction standards should be applied based on road class. So that's how we're meeting that standard, and that will be included, that map will be included as an appendix item to the transportation master plan. So then I'm going to turn it back over to Randall to talk more about the third key issue, which is the identification of capital needs and funded sources.
Yeah, well, so I think we've, you know, largely covered this. We have the three investment programs. As I mentioned, current funding is based on the reasonably expected revenue forecast that we get from the Office of Finance here in conjunction with our financial analyst. We acknowledge that the strategic investment program requires new revenue, significant new revenue. The work of the Funding Working Group has provided a short list of things to explore. When we talked to council in June, they said to reconstitute that group. And, well, reconstitute a Funding Working Group, probably be some of those members, probably a number of new members with a large representation from the business community, because when we talk about something like a mobility fee that would be assessed to both residential and commercial properties, that we need to make sure that people are feeling good about that. But we, but we see that there are a number of ways that we can potentially fund that plan. But it is, but it is one of the critical issues as part of the plan, is that we need to find that funding, and we need to find it relatively soon, and we need to implement the plan over the 11-year period that we have. And then we acknowledge the vision program is unfunded, but we keep track of that. One of the reasons we do have those projects and keep them is that allows us to preserve right-of-way when we go through the development review process, so we don't end up having something built on top of a facility that we might ultimately want to build. So I don't know if that covers what I needed to say.
I think so.
Okay.
And so that's really, for the analysis, I'm not sure if there are need for the public hearing or what the formal move is for that.
Do we have anyone from the members?
It's like money, Pythons.
They're all going to come out of the...
So I think we can move to discussion and recommendation.
Yep, so key issue number one, let's just negative-poll our way through these, if that's okay with any of everybody, since staff has done such a good job walking us through each one of those key issues separately. So key issue one, is it consistent with the goals, policies?
Can I just?
You're up, yeah, sure.
I hope it won't take long. I haven't seen any mention in here of CU South transportation-related potential issues, which I can imagine may be one of the largest potential needs in the future for, for new transit-related matters. And it may not be appropriate to deal with it here, but I just wondered if, where is that showing up in your, in your planning activities?
Well, so we actually, well, two responses to that. You know, we have, as a city, we, negotiating position, we have our strongest negotiating position as part of the annexation process. So typically, a lot of our expectations would be handled through that.
Right.
As a condition of annexation. And then if there is annexation, and there is then development approved as part of a development plan for CU South, the TNP actually has an amendment process, a formal amendment process, that was adopted by council quite a while back. And the short description of that is, if there is a public process, and if there is a decision by council, that decision amends the TNP. So we try to keep the plan consistent. So, we try to keep the plan consistent with development that results or other plans that are adopted by council. So, it just keeps us from being in this endless loop of having to come back and amend. We just said, "Well, if there's been a public process and if council has made a decision and on a public issue, we ought to reflect that."
Well, thank you. So, on other matters, is...
John, can I follow up on that?
Oh, go ahead.
Before...you're going to change the subject?
I was...no, I was just...I had one follow-up question.
Oh, well, you can follow up on your own.
Yeah. So, but are you involved in the discussions with CU and other staff dealing with the potential annexation?
So, I personally am not, but there are...
But I mean, colleagues.
...transportation staff very much involved in the CU South discussions, as well as CDOT. Because if you've read the paper, I know that some of the options have, you know, significant potential impact on their property and their facilities.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I was going to ask the same thing. So, just to get finer-grained on what John just asked you, if we get to the point where we're negotiating an annexation agreement with CU for CU South, do you anticipate the transportation staff will have completed a needs analysis and will be appropriately advising council, the city attorney, the city manager around what kinds of concessions to require as part of the annexation agreement or as part of a development agreement that's part of the annexation agreement to require public infrastructure to be built by CU?
Yeah, so typically, that work would be done by consultants, paid by the applicant, so in this case, CU. I know there's been some traffic work, you know, traffic analysis and some projections done for the CU South. I don't...I haven't read that, so I can't really speak to it. But that would be part, certainly part of the package that we would then analyze...
Right, right.
...and would be part of a recommendation to council from staff.
That's a...so, yeah, it would go the other way where it would propose a development plan and the transportation needs to go along with that through their consultant and then our transportation staff would review that for sufficiency.
Yeah. And then, you know, again, because annexation, we...I mean, they would need to demonstrate community benefit. And I would expect that part of that would be a very aggressive TDM program, potentially transit service, other things that would reduce vehicle impact on the community.
Thank you.
We're going to be voting on number two, the Master Plan Summary, but I couldn't find that in the packet. Is...I know that there's a pretty extensive existing transportation master plan summary in the BVCP, but was that...did I miss it somehow?
It should have been in the packet.
It should have been attachment.
Yeah.
One of the attachments. Oh, gosh.
It's relatively brief, the summary.
Yeah, it's just a few pages.
Oh, is it? Okay. Let me see if I can find it here.
The master plan summaries are in the back of the comp plan.
Yeah, I know where...I was looking at the existing one. I just didn't see the proposed one anywhere. But let's see, I'll start looking for it.
I think it's in attachment B.
B, isn't it?
B, is it? Okay, thank you.
And if you look in the document for the full packet, it starts on page...
I don't know how I missed it.
And the PDF is 381.
381, that's how I missed it. I was looking...thank you.
Good question.
Well, this goes to show, even David makes mistakes once in a very long time.
I won't count.
Oh, here it is.
Too late. On the record.
Okay.
He never misses anything.
Oh, yes, I do.
This one.
Let's see if we can tackle key issue number one, which is...which is, do we think this is in alignment with the BVCP? Does anyone disagree with staff's assessment? No. Okay. Key issue number two, does the master plan outline BVCP service standards and a plan to meet them in the future? Does anyone disagree with staff's analysis saying that they do? Okay, great.
So, I'm just going to go on the record and just say, I think the plan is, one, consistent with the goals and policies and growth projections, and, two, it's outlining the service standards and a plan to meet them in the future. But I do want to put on the record one more time what I said in our hearing on the 25th of July. Now that I've gotten a chance to really see the plan, it tips a cap to a lack of comfort due to missing our narrow sidewalks. It certainly talks about a new component in this TNP, developing a revised neighborhood accessibility, GIS analysis for ongoing assessment and improvement of ways to create continuous improvement of walking systems throughout Boulder. And it has a bunch of material around neighborhood green streets. So, I think that, you know, on a general level, the plan and plans this big should be...stay on a general level. I think it does talk to making walking a more pleasant experience. But it also talks a lot about how, you know, that falls to land use patterns and stuff. And I would say that it also falls to simply designing better sidewalks and neighborhood facilities. We talked at the meeting last week, or I talked about, you know, traffic calming narrowing streets, planting trees in the right-of-way, you know, taking up a parking space every once in a while with a street tree that's literally, you know, in the street so that you can pinch the street a little bit, making the sidewalk wide enough that a family can go for an after-dinner walk without walking single file. Those are things that I think the plan, these general...these three general items that I was able to glean out of the plan point towards but don't actually address.
Fair. John?
If I can just embroider a little bit on your comments. I also think that, in general, curb management activities are becoming, which is a portion of what you were talking about, are becoming increasingly important, both due to expectations of neighborhoods and residents about what parking might be available in front of their house and who has a right to it, as well as commercial-type issues. And so, it seems to me that it's worth paying some explicit attention to that as well.
Yeah, the diagrams that you do have in the report are really excellent, I think, in delving into that exact topic.
Yeah, and just for the board's information on the work program...
Is your mic off, Randall?
I'm sorry.
It is. Next year on the work program, a major effort is a curb management study. And so, we'll be looking at everything related to curb management in the city, as well as piloting...doing a pilot with the transportation network companies for designated safe pickup and drop-off zones. And then, that potentially leads, you know, on the technological side, to things like dynamic management of the curb, where for both people and delivery, you can make a reservation, you pay for that privilege, you touch the curb where you want to, you load and unload, and you're off on your business. So, yeah, yeah, there are people out there saying that's the next billion-dollar industry in the transportation world, is curb management. Well, we'll see.
Get in early. Okay, so, key issue number three, are the capital needs and funding sources, funded sources, funding sources outlined in the master plan?
Yes.
Does anyone disagree that they are?
I think you've done what you can here. I don't see the funding sources. I see potential funding sources, but the actual funding source has not been outlined, but I don't see how you can.
Well, and so, we have quite a detailed projection in terms of expected revenue for the current funding. So, yeah, so we do have that. So, that is our known expenditure. We have to go find additional funding to accomplish the strategic.
Right. So, I'm not sure you can do more. I just am trying to be responsive to this question. They're not all outlined because they don't exist yet, so...
Well, I think what Randall's correction is that they are outlined, the ones that they know about are outlined. And beyond that, they have identified other potential sources. So, factually, this one is a yes, I think, in that context.
Yeah, I mean, we will not spend more than we will have in revenue. That is current funding.
So, does anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah.
Do it, David.
I move that Planning Board recommend acceptance of the Transportation Master Plan update and approval of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan Transportation Master Plan Summary. And I'll just add that I was looking and it references the pedestrian plan in the summary and the comp plan, so I think that's nice.
And if I may clarify, you were actually asked to approve the Transportation Master Plan Summary and not just make a recommendation on it?
Oh, yes, sorry. And approve, so...
Well, does it need to be tease every...
Two separate motions.
Can you correct that?
Correct it. Nice deal.
Yeah, that'd probably be clearest.
Okay. So, I'll just do the acceptance of the Transportation Master Plan update as it's written up there.
I'll second that. Anyone want to speak to it? Okay, go ahead and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Anyone want to make another motion?
You want to do that one?
Okay. As long as we're splitting it up. I recommend Planning Board approve the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan Transportation Master Plan Summary.
Second.
You can do it.
All right, Peter, you get the second. Anyone want to speak to the motion? Nope? Cool. Go ahead and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Cool. Passes unanimously. We get to go home.
Well, and thank you very much. We appreciate your attention and questions.
Cool, I know.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you guys for all of that.
Do you have a question?
So, the next thing we're going to try to do is talk through a little bit of a...I guess if anybody has any matters. But I think there's also a calendar check that we need to do.
I just wanted to remind you or remind you and inform you, next Thursday is the luncheon with our...with a potential planning director. But the Fishbowl, you may not be familiar with where that is, the Fishbowl Conference Room. It's actually right across the hall. So, it's at the top of these stairs across the hall. Just wanted to let you know.
And that's where the lunch is?
Yes, that's where the lunch is.
What day is it?
Thursday, the 29th of August.
We've been asked to try to get a head count for that. Who all intends to be there? Herman?
What day?
The 29th of August.
David, John, so possibly Peter and Lupita? I'll be there, so we got...
Oh, I do have a known planning director candidate. Yeah.
Okay. So, you're able to go to that, too?
I think so, I can.
Okay, Peter, how about you? What do you...
I guess I have to...
Is that something that needs to be noticed publicly if there's so many of us showing up there?
Yes.
That's partially why we're asking this question right now.
I'll pretend I don't know.
Because if there was only going to be one, then it wouldn't be a problem.
It can also just be noticed to be safe.
Yeah.
What was that?
We can just notice it and then we have it covered.
So, I noticed you over there. I'll be there.
Okay, great.
Notice me, I'm there.
So, I do not know what Sarah's travel schedule is or what she's up to, but you could just email directly.
I think she responded.
Okay, did she respond to that invitation?
She may have responded. I can't remember.
I think she was...
I think she's off the grid right now.
Okay, great.
Really?
I saw Anderson, she was in the Grand Canyon.
Yeah, she's in the Grand Canyon rafting, so I think she's off the grid. I hope she's off the grid.
Yeah, hopefully. So, let's see if we can, like, finish our meeting here, guys. I know it's fun to chat, but...so, one of the reasons that we were asking that is to find out if we needed to do anything to structure the discussion for that meeting. So, I think, given that we've got at least six of us being there, it's probably safe for us to say that we don't need to do any work in advance to make sure everyone's opinions or questions are represented. We will represent ourselves in that meeting with Sam Assefa. So, is it okay for us to proceed with essentially fairly...I've been talking to Chris Meschick about how he wants to run this meeting, a fairly unstructured environment where we just kind of bring up whatever we need to bring up unless he comes up with a more strict structure within the next five days?
That's fine.
Okay. As, you know, we're kind of asked if we need to help craft an agenda or poll questions from folks in advance. So, since we're all going to be there, I think we probably don't need to do that. Does that sound fair?
Well, would staff want Planning Board? I mean, I'm polling the staff that's here, so I don't know if that...
So, I had a phone call with Chris and he asked me to ask this question right now.
Okay. But he didn't say how staff feels about getting some of the...some Planning Board input. He's comfortable with just kind of running it.
So, basically, the question was, and the, you know, the way we looked at it together was, if only one or two of us is going to show up, is there a mechanism by which we could get broader voices represented at that meeting? Since we have most people attending, we don't have to do that.
Okay.
So, in light of that, since we can all represent our own opinions in that meeting, is it okay for us to kind of go into it in a relatively unstructured fashion?
Yeah.
That's the question. Any other matters?
No.
Okay, we're done.
Calendar check was taken care of.
Sorry.